Welcome to all. I would like to call together our May 21st meeting of the Salina City Commission to order. Would the clerk please call to roll?
Mayor Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Angel.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Householder.
Here.
Commissioner Shirley.
All those that are able to stand, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with a welcome to everyone here. We've got a full room in front of us, and even on overflow on the sides, it looks like. So to that, I'll say the first item on our agenda is our public forum. This is an opportunity for all citizens of Salina to come forward with any items that are not part of the published agenda. So if something that you would like to speak on is occurring on the agenda, you'll have your opportunity for public comments when those items come up. And we would ask throughout the citizens' forum and later on during the meeting that everybody please hold their comments to approximately three minutes. And then if they're speaking on a matter that somebody else has spoke on, please avoid making the same points that somebody else has throughout the afternoon. So to that, any citizens that are here on issues not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name and your address.
My name is John Bosin, 2363 Chapel Ridge Place here in Salina. I'm speaking on behalf of Salina Cares, a group of citizens and stakeholders who care about respecting the environment. Today, we ask that the city commission stop adding inorganic chemical fluoride to the Salina municipal water system. On Tuesday, November 6, 1956, the people of Salina voted against fluoridation, and we understand 12 years after that, the city commission put it in without offering the citizens an opportunity to vote. We would like that position reversed and pull the fluoride out. We submit water fluoridation is unsafe. We'd like you to demonstrate that Salina has the vision to be an environmentally friendly and green community and not just on paper. We support your strategic plan and mission statement, and we'd like you to show that you care about respecting the environment and take decisive action to stop fluoridating Salina's water. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to awards and proclamation.
Item 4.1, the day of May 26, 2012, as Poppy Day in the city of Salina. Sue Herman, Vice President of American Legion Auxiliary, will read the proclamation.
I hope I don't bumble this up. I had my eyes dilated this morning, and they're still not clear. Whereas America is a land of freedom preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers, whereas those who have answered the call to arms have died on the field of battle, whereas a nation at peace must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war, whereas the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of the memorial flower. Therefore, I, Norman M. Jennings, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim May 26, 2012, as Poppy Day, and ask that all citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy on this day.
Thank you. Do you have any events or items to celebrate?
Memorial Day, there will be services. The VFW will be up at Gibson Hill. The American Legion will be at Rose Lawn. We will have a services at 11 o'clock at the memorial in Sunset Park. And after following that, we will have lunch at the American Legion Post.
Excellent. Sounds like a busy day.
Mm-hmm.
I have a signed copy of your proclamation.
Item 4.2, the week of May 20 through 26, 2012, as National Public Works Week in the city of Salina. Kent Johnson, Civil Engineer II, will read the proclamation.
Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as streets and highways, stormwater and levee systems, solid waste collection and disposal operations, municipal fleet maintenance services, water treatment and distribution, wastewater collection and treatment, engineering and inspection, public facilities, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these services and facilities each and every day, as well as in times of emergency and community disaster, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these services and facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, I, Norman M. Jennings, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20 through May 26, 2012, as National Public Works Week in the city of Salina, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life.
So what activities do we got planned?
We are having a lunch on Friday for the employees of the public works department, and outstanding employee contributions and projects will be recognized at that time.
Excellent. I have a signed copy of your proclamation. This time, we'll move on to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, public hearing on an appeal of application number CU 03-2B, requesting an amendment of the original conditional use permit approved for the hospice center.
I'd like to open this public hearing and to that officially because our city commission is in a quasi-judicial role on this matter, which we don't expect the public to always understand the definition of that. I thought I would just briefly state that matters like these that come before the city commission, we are under a judicial role, and comments from people that have interest in this have a need to be disclosed. But it also makes an awkward situation when a citizen has something that they would like to share with commissioners on one of these items. I received a phone call, as a matter of public disclosure, from Phil Coleman, whose comments are here with us, and I was able to explain that to him on that telephone conversation, and it was after he had stated that his, one of his family members had passed away at the hospice center, and he was concerned about them financially, and that's all the farther that he got, but I needed to disclose that. I will turn this hearing over to counsel.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, Mr. Andrew will direct the proceedings, but I appreciate the chance to introduce Mr. Todd Luckman. Todd is a member of the Stumbo Hansen Law Firm in Topeka, Kansas. He is here today in order to advise you on any legal aspects of this proceeding. Our firm, or my firm, Clark Meisenlinville, also is general counsel for Salina Regional Health Center, and under those circumstances, we thought it best that you have independent counsel as you consider this matter, both through your public hearing and in your deliberations, whether those be in closed session, as is your prerogative, or in open session. And want to assure everyone that that arrangement was made without any additional cost to the city, just a matter that we wanted to be sure that there was not any appearance of conflict of interest as you consider this important matter.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you noted, this is a land use matter that comes before you as a quasi-judicial matter, and it comes before you today with an opportunity for a full public hearing before the city commission, and your decision today should be based on both the evidence that was put forward to the planning commission and anything that got presented to you today. But the subject property that we are dealing with today is the hospice center of Salina, which is located on Holly Lane, approximately 270 to 300 feet south of the intersection of Holly Lane and Crawford. And John, I'm gonna, he'll be bouncing around with different slides here, but I'm gonna, just to give you a way of background as to why a little bit we are here. A few years back, there was great efforts made with city staff, with our various boards and commissions, and with Representative Salina Regional Health Center, and a new zoning district was created, which is a hospital-medical zoning district designed to accommodate the various operations of the Salina Regional Health Center, primarily in this area of the Santa Fe campus. But what you have on the screen there is a listing of the various facilities and what their current zoning classification is, and if you would scroll to the bottom there, John, you can see the majority of them are hospital-medical, but this is the only facility that is zoned R, which is a single-family residential designation. And the hospice that was built there was done under a conditional use permit, and the single-family zoning was in place at that time and is still in place. So I'll let you go back to the aerial there, John, but just by way of background, you are treading on an area that previous commissions have discussed and tread on, so it's always useful to give you a little bit of background. Much of the credit or blame, depending on you, how you look at it, for making this piece of property developable goes to Matt Wagner, who, back in the mid-1990s, decided he wanted to convert this from a tree farm, and a Christmas tree farm, to developable property. And Mr. Wagner went to great lengths working with the Corps of Engineers and with FEMA to get engineering done and to get engineered fill and to get placement of an area that was, in fact, developable, that's shaped, it's narrow at the top, fattens out here and narrows at the bottom, and his goal at the time was to develop a single-family residential subdivision. And when the various cost estimates for utilities and street improvements came in, he decided it was not feasible. And he later sold that property to Roy Wilbur, who also looked at that, and he replatted the property to create 14 lots instead of 10, and he decided it was not feasible. And at a later time, the Wilbur's deeded the property over to Hospice of Salina, and they subsequently replatted the property into a single lot and block and proposed that as a site for the hospice facility, which at that time was located in the Penn Campus of the Salina Regional Health Center. So staff looked at the hospice, decided it was most close to a nursing home or group care facility, which is allowed in an R district on a conditional use permit basis, and that item was reviewed by the planning commission, and their application was approved, but it was a split vote, and that approval was then appealed to the city commission. And the city commission ratified the decision of the planning commission and approved the conditional use permit, but they proved it believing that the plans at the time were too conceptual, so they required that final plans come back. And in March of 2004, the city commission approved a final site plan for the hospice facility, and they also put a condition on that, that any changes or expansion to the parking area must be brought back for city commission review and approval. And so the background on this is that it is a single-family zoned area, it's abutting other single-family zoned lots. The lots on the east side of Holly Lane have been there since the late 1970s and have not developed. The one house that is there is a historic farmhouse and was there at the time. But in 2004, after the approval of the hospice project, then Holly Lane was constructed, and what John has up on the screen there is a plat of the property, and this is the single lot and block that is occupied by hospice, and this area in behind is basically a flood control easement or flood area for containing floodwater from the Smoky Hill River. The bridge there at Crawford kind of serves as an impediment to water going downstream. It backs up, and it stores in this area, and when it's dry, that's kind of an open space or pasture area. So the, what you see on this drawing across the street is a series of platted, single-family lots, and the first four lots are vacant at this time, but they're zoned for single-family residential use. So the hospice was approved as a conditional use permit, a final site plan with all the details that are in your packet, was approved by the city commission, a building permit was issued, road was constructed, and the hospice was occupied in 2007. The original concept, and John, if you could go to the floor plan, the colored floor plan. This is the concept that was presented to the city commission in 2003 and 2004, and this is a patient wing here that has six patient living units in it. This is a second wing that also has six living units in it, and then this area, which extends off towards the northeast, is an area that's devoted to administrative office space for hospice. And so the, this building has a basement, but the basement is used for storage. The plan that was put forward and brought before the planning commission was to retain this as residential space, convert this area to office space for hospice, and so the result would be to have six living units instead of 12. This area here would be converted to space for Veridian Behavioral Health, and then the office, or the storage area in the basement, was to be converted to office and clinical space as well. So that proposal, that application, was filed and went before the city planning commission for a public hearing, and they reviewed that, and at their meeting, a motion was made to approve it at their April 17 meeting. That motion failed by a five to two vote, but that was sufficient to be a final decision. But because the motion was made to approve and not deny, we advised the city commission that we thought it should go back and give the planning commission an opportunity to articulate their reasons. So it did go back to the city planning commission on the 15th of May at per your direction, and they made a motion to deny the request, and they based it on the following factors: that the proposed change in use from a hospice facility would have negative impacts on the surrounding neighborhood. These negative impacts include the perception by property owners and prospective owners that neighborhood safety may be diminished, potential decrease in property value due to increase in traffic, and potential decrease in property value due to the nature of the proposed business, which would be a change in use from a use that they felt was compatible with single-family residential usage to one that was more incompatible commercial use. And therefore, they concluded that the site plan, which involved the conversion of living space to office space, the conversion of the basement, and the addition of 33 additional parking stalls, the majority of the planning commission felt that that was not compatible with the use of adjacent properties. And I'd just briefly refer you to items pages three and four and five in your report there, but on any conditional use permit, staff helps the planning commission reach their decision by walking through those different factors that they are to consider, and one is whether the proposed use will comply with all zoning ordinance requirements. And as we pointed out to you, the building location, the footprint, the setbacks, the lock coverage, everything that's there today conforms with the R district, and there's nothing that the Salina Regional Health Center is proposing to change the footprint, expand it in any way. So we didn't, there was no debate identified about whether there was conformance with zoning. The second factor that they looked at was whether the proposed use in the proposed location would contribute to the welfare and convenience of the public. And I think everyone agreed that Veridian Behavioral Health contributes to the health and well-being of the Salina community. What was not unanimous or agreed upon was whether they would, it would contribute to the welfare and convenience of the public if it was in this location. The third factor there deals with injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood, and that's where the planning commission focused most of their attention. And we did a calculation, which is conservative, but essentially that the Veridian Behavioral Health would generate at least 60 vehicle trips a day on Holly Lane in addition to what is traveling Holly Lane today. We also determined that with these changes, that 56 off-street parking spaces would be needed to support the change, and they're proposing to create 62 spaces. The other factor they're supposed to consider is the adequacy of utilities and drainage, and all those provisions are in place and would not change, and there was some discussion about the visibility constraints at the Holly Lane-Crawford intersection. As far as your information about how this fits with the comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan shows this area south of Crawford and east of the river as suburban residential. So again, this comes to you as in the point of a written appeal from the planning commission's action, and you have two options before you today. One would be to accept the findings and reasoning of the planning commission and sustain the decision to not approve the requested amendment of the original conditional use permit. Your second option would be to return this item for reconsideration to the planning commission, and in doing that, you would want to point out to them areas that you think they failed to take into account or maybe gave too much weight to and give them some guidance. If you were to accept the reasoning and findings of the planning commission, that would be final action, and then the only other alternative action would be some action in district court in appeal of your decision. If you send it back to the planning commission and ask them to take a look at it again based on some additional considerations, and they don't change their mind, and it comes back to you again, then you will be the final decision-maker when that comes back. So in taking your action today, you should take whatever action you believe is in the best interests of the neighborhood and the community based on all the information that is presented, and when it gets to the point of making a motion, that motion should include whatever findings or reasons that your motion is based upon, and that's where Mr. Luckman can assist you if needed. So with that, John has kind of scanned through the drawings. You've had those in your packet to look at, but I would be open to any questions about any of the material in your packet or any drawings or exhibits that you might want to view again.
Basically, in reiteration, we sit in a quasi-judicial position in order to either uphold the work that the planning commission has done and agree with the recommendations and approve it, or we find fault with actions that they would have taken, and then we need to send it back with a summary of where we feel that they were...
Of what you find fault with, or you think they gave too much weight to something that shouldn't have been given.
So our process is towards their process versus our process is normally to a greater picture.
Right. But if it goes back to the planning commission and they don't modify their action, it will come back to you, and then you'll be the final decision-maker.
Understand. Thank you. Are there questions of staff at this time?
If not, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Is it our time for any public comment on this matter? Please step forward and state your name and your address, sir.
My name is Jack Henenkamp. I'm Vice President of Facilities at Salina Regional Health Center, and I'm representing Salina Regional Health Center. First of all, I'd like to thank you, city commissioners, for being here today and being willing to listen to this hearing, and secondly, and equally important, to city staff, who's been a great help in making sure we follow procedure in this and providing necessary information that would not be available to us otherwise. My main purpose here today, the purpose of Salina Regional Health Center being here today, is that we will respectfully request that city commission either overturn the ruling of the planning commission and allow the Hospital Veridian program to occupy a portion of the hospice of Salina facility, or if that remedy is not available, which I understand now it is not at this time, to the city commission, that it finds that the initial determination by the planning commission did not sufficiently consider or perhaps have available the information to judiciously establish their decision of May 15, and return the application for reconsideration and approval of the request. Dean's done, I think, a good job providing the basic background information. In fact, he's provided some information that will no doubt shorten the comments I would make, since he's addressed a number of issues from the planning commission that they were charged with that were not issues of concern, and so I will not readdress those here. It is with regret, we find ourselves in a position that we're needing to find something else for the hospice facility. I think it is a hospital that's well-received by the community, and those that go there for, that have the unfortunate situation of needing that service nevertheless do appreciate the facility, and we give many good remarks on it. However, since October 1, 2008, the facility's experienced more than $2,600, $2,600,000 of losses, and even when donations are taken into consideration in that same period, it's almost $2 million worth of losses. Those losses are unsustainable to continue that, and one way for us to mitigate that was to place a service that does not need to be at our main facilities, that can help mitigate or spread some of those costs with the services needed in the community, and that is also allied with hospice programs. The Veridian program is a counseling program, which we feel is very much allied with hospice and the counseling nature of it. It has grown beyond the capacity we have at Salina Regional Health Center and the buildings we have for it, and we are working to keep those buildings that we have for bringing additional medical personnel into the community. Physicians that we work hard to attract, and I don't want to exaggerate this, but the central Kansas and the rural regions are difficult to attract physicians, so our objective is to have places for those physicians to come, to employ them when needed, and have a place for them. And with Veridian outgrowing that service, that place that they have, and now being in a position needing to expand their services based on demand and the underperformance of the hospice facility, it is an ideal location for us to consider for that application. Dean has pretty well described our process that we used to get to this point. I wouldn't cover that further. I wouldn't cover that further, but in the evaluation, we looked at all the hospital services we have to determine which service could possibly fit in hospice, recognizing that after five years, we're not going to see the increase in volumes that, for the facility we have, or the expansion, which was to allow it to go to a twenty-four-bed facility versus the twelve, which was agreed to at the time the conditional use was granted. A couple of things in the city report that you received today, it notes that the hospice facility is two-thirds residential and one-third officer, and it will become three-quarter office area and one-quarter residential space. I would still point out that the facility will be two-thirds hospice use and function and one-third Veridian. The picture that was up there showed roughly green areas and yellow areas. The yellow areas are the ones that are occupied by hospice because, or by Veridian, because hospice will still have the storage facilities in that area. The green area was kind of the main dot, and four other was around it. That will be part of the Veridian program and then the basement. But from a square footage perspective, it's roughly one-third and two-thirds. We don't deny that what we propose will increase the traffic flow from what it is existing. Clearly, the traffic flow that is there now is artificially low or realistically low because the hospice volumes have not reached what they were expected to be. No doubt, the reason we're going there is because we need to have additional services that will make use of the facility, and that would increase the traffic flow. That said, we will be able to show and demonstrate that the traffic patterns there will not exceed what is typical of an average residential street in Salina, Kansas, and that information from the City of Salina. On page six of the report, there indicates there are some potential visibility constraints at Holly Lane. If John would bring up the photographs, we've got four photographs, two that show Holly Lane and then two that show Victoria Heights. This is a picture looking to the west from Holly Lane, and I positioned myself the same. I mean, that's pretty good visibility. When I say visibility isn't good there or challenging, I would not see that as challenging looking to the west, and if you would go to the east, I think this is pretty good visibility looking east from that location back behind it. Now, if we'd go to the next picture showing, as an example, here's a visibility picture from Victoria Heights, which in my opinion is much, much less than what is expressed as a concern for Holly Lane. And if we could go to the next one, looking to the east, I think it's comparable to what we would see. As I looked up and down Crawford Street, there are many, many locations far worse when it comes to visibility and access to that, and there are many homes, when you get to West Crawford, where they actually enter right onto the, onto the street. So, I cannot see that as an issue of concern related to traffic. In working through the issues of the planning commission, since Dean covered those so well, I would skip to those that seem to cause some consternation. The planning commission must find that the proposed conditional use in this location will contribute to the welfare and convenience of the public. From our perspective, this will contribute to the convenience and welfare of the public of Salina and region by allowing expansion of services in a facility that already exists and that can provide services where sufficient space does not exist in the current location. It makes the best use of healthcare dollars by using an existing facility. It is allowed by the conditional use permits for residential areas. It provides convenient counseling and access for hospice patients due to its proximity at that location. It will provide an ideal setting, and that is similar to surrounding residential locations in Pawnee Mental Health and Junction City and Prairie View Mental Health Center and McPherson, Kansas, that have residential areas around them. The location will contribute to the welfare of the public, community, and region because it exists, has available underutilized space, and by using it prevents the possible creation of a derelict building in sight. Additionally, the planning commission must find that the proposed conditional use will not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood, and that it will not dominate the immediate neighborhood. The building at seven-thirty Holly Lane has existed for five years. Prior to the development of the property, only a dirt lane existed to Mr. Morris's house. The hospice site was platted for ten residential properties, and Dean, I guess I had a question here. I read Met Wagner had fourteen, platted for fourteen, was it fourteen or was it-
It started at ten and-
Escalated?
Escalated.
Okay. I'll probably use fourteen throughout the rest of this, since that was the maximum for it, but those were accepted, and there will be no change in the facility, no change. We are getting additional parking, and that would have been added even if hospice had been there and gone to a twenty-four-bed unit. Additional parking would have been needed. The facility does not and will not dominate the immediate neighborhood in the future, just as it does not now. At the April seventeenth meeting, Dana Morris presented a letter from an appraiser. Excuse me a second. Should I hand these to you or directly to the commission? Directly to the commission. I'm going to provide a letter from appraisers June Treffer and Gary Thompson of Salina, Kansas, here to you, if I may approach.
Could you, yeah, could you hand them to-
Chief, there's one to tell for distribution.
Okay.
While he's reviewing those, if I could continue.
Please.
At April seventeenth meeting, Dana Morris presented a letter from an appraiser, Ellie Ritter, that in her opinion, the evaluation on Mr. Morris's property specifically would decline fifty percent to ninety-nine percent, and provide the Veridian service in the existing hospice, hospital facility at seven-thirty Holly Lane would make the house, quote, "future sale to a homebuyer almost impossible." I'm not sure where some of Mrs. Ritter's, Ms. Ritter's figures came from. There were two issues there. One, the description of patients and the amount of volume of activity would have, and then the other, of course, is the valuation of the home. I will say, it's hard to imagine the activity we have, which our persons from Veridian will describe further, but would create a fifty to ninety-nine percent reduction in value. Firstly, they, what was described as would be ten to twelve additional professionals, and that's true. We agreed to that. That was the number. And each counselor would see six to eight patients a day, and that was certainly acknowledged. However, from there, it said there would be twenty support staff that would need to go to the facility. Well, there won't be. There'll be two support staff that support the counselors. There's not going to be twenty. From that, an escalation of number of trips per day was set at five hundred and thirty-nine. If you take the midpoint of counselors, the midpoint of patients, the midpoint of seven trips per day that were focused in there, and that's not true. We're going to have sixty to eighty trips per day. One patient is in and out one time. They're not in and out seven or eight times. The other thing, the patients were described as having some form of antisocial behavior that is not an appropriate or reasonable characterization of the patients, and our Veridian personnel will explain that further here. I have described the letter from the two residential licensed appraisers in Salina, June Treffer and Gary Thompson. Has that been distributed?
Yes.
Okay. The report, as you will note, disputes that there would be the loss anywhere near the value stated in the opposing report, and if any, would be temporary and limited to an estimated five percent or less, and that mitigated within six months after Veridian occupancy. This was done after a careful review and analysis of the type of persons and programs provided by Veridian. Veridian essentially becomes a non-issue in the adjacent property valuation. The report notes that there would be no effect on property valuations for Victoria Heights or Victoria Heights Terrace. What John has up here is a kind of a picture of, the hospice facilities exist. It has screening, it has great circular drives, it has good parking in the front for the patients and families. What I'd like to go to, though, are the, are looking towards the east. This is a picture looking east, and Victoria Heights Terrace, I believe, is on the other side of that, but there's, you can't see it, you can't see what it would be, and we've got two or three, but as you look all the way along there, there's really no evidence of that. I mean, it's, so I'm not sure what the issue is at that location for concern, but I did want to bring the picture that that's what you see when you're looking to the east from the hospice center. It might show, there's another. This one doesn't show well, but I took it around twelve fifteen that day. There was still some shading, but you're looking at Mr. Morris's property there. Certainly, when the sun gets more to the west, it would show up better. It was just the time of day I took the picture, that was more shadowed. The last thing I would have in that category is Mr. George Johnson, a man I knew, as did many in the community, passed away not long ago, and he and his wife's property at seven-thirty-eight Victoria Heights recently sold. I understand Mr. Johnson was in opposition to the development of hospice with reasons that included it would adversely affect his property values, as was indicated by other residents in the area. The property sold for three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. It did not experience a decline in valuation as a result of the hospice, as was predicted at the time. Valuations sequentially from two thousand seven through two thousand eleven were three hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand three twenty, three hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, and three hundred and forty-four thousand in the year sold. So the hospice facility nearby was alleged that it would have a significant decline, create a significant decline in property valuations, and that did not happen. And in fact, persons were willing to pay above appraised value in Victoria Heights. We would submit that this will be the same. We submit that it would be the same for Mr. Morris's property at the time indicated by June Treffer and Gary Thompson, and I think you would agree. During the course of the planning commission meeting, there were a number of comments made that may have influenced their decision, weren't, were not necessarily directly related to that, but a main one, a critical one, a key one, which we want to address today further, and there will be others besides myself that would do that, was that Veridian patients will reduce the safety of the neighborhood by the nature of their condition and needing professional behavioral health assistance. Over and over and over, this was alluded to, and it's simply not the case. The fact that a person's of behavioral health and the type of service we offer at Veridian does not make them a danger to themselves or others, and in fact, that is one of the criteria for them being able to be patients of Veridian services. There was also indication that there was a children's playground, which, by the way, is owned by Salina Regional Health Center and hospice, and that children would no longer be able to play there any longer because persons that would be going to Veridian would be there, and everyone would fear for their children's lives that would be there. The YMCA is adjacent to the Central Kansas Mental Health. Kids of all ages and all size groups are at that location. While not in a residential area, if the issue is concerned for children, clearly with Central Kansas Mental Health and, and, and large playgrounds here, and large places for children to play, if there were a danger there, we would have known about it. Oakdale School is a block from Wellspring and Three Rivers Family Therapy, the same issue there. There are not issues there, and they're in a residential area. Kids, a child center in McPherson, Kansas, is immediately adjacent to the Prairie View Behavioral Health Unit and residential area. There are not issues there. The characterization of persons seeking assistance from Veridian services in opposition to the use of hospice facility is unreasonable and unfair. The high increased volume of traffic flow would be adverse to otherwise quiet residential area and create safety issues. The volume of Veridian traffic is estimated, as has been said many times here now, sixty to eighty in and out daily, would be no more and much less than the amount of hospice traffic that would have been experienced had the program been successful there or expanded to twenty-four beds. The director of the hospice program notes that there would be around ten to twelve on a daily basis for hospice patients, and had been the full volume by the time you factor in all the vendors that would need to come and buy there. If you, if you took that number, it would be two hundred and eighty-eight daily. Holly Lane is built and classified as a local residential street. The addition of Veridian is noted to sixty to eighty. A typical residential street in Salina is estimated to have around three hundred vehicle trips per day, according to information I received from Salina, and much higher accounts with adjacent schools. The zoning is R. The number of lots in the area where hospice facilities developed could have been as many as fourteen. That would have been, and the city estimates approximately ten trips per day for residential property owners. Well, that would be a hundred and forty. We're still falling below that. There's no way that we could be below that level and still be considered a hazard. And if you take streets such as Ohio Street or Merrymount and Crawford Street, on Crawford Street alone, there's thirteen thousand to fourteen thousand vehicles a day between Ohio and Merrymount, and I live west of town, and I would say there's probably the same, if not more, vehicle trips out in that direction, and many of those are right on there. So those are not presenting concerns. I'm not sure how this issue here with one family residence on there and the hospice we have and the Veridian we propose would create traffic and access hazards. Clearly, we did have exceptionally low traffic with Veridian, but one other thing I want to point out is that one of the greatest safety issues in a residential street is the amount of on-street parking. We are providing great amounts of off-street parking for this location, and therefore, there will not be, from the Salina Regional Health Center, Veridian perspective, any on-street parking which will enhance the safety of that street and not detract from It was also noted that the volume of traffic would represent additional traffic hazard from a pedestrian perspective. I won't go into detail on that, but I would offer the same reason and logic for that as the vehicular traffic. Todd Welsh, a member of the planning commissioner, who recused himself from voting but did present opposition to the Salina Regional Health Center proposal, noted that the adverse effect regarding previously unannounced and not fully explained at the meeting, possible development across the street from the hospice facility by him, would be jeopardized, if not completely stopped, by the believed nature of Veridian clientele type and for street safety. First, I would request that the more, that more value and consideration be given by the review commission to an existing facility that fits the qualifications for a conditional use by definition in our district to a possible, not fully explained, maybe development where all property is admittedly not yet under proposed developer's ownership. Also, the characterization of Veridian patients as preventing development is unreasonable. I would request that the city commission or planning commission not make a determination based on a maybe event, but, but consider a facility that is not changing physically, that does not overwhelm. Any of the design elements has already been demonstrated and attested to by Mr. Andrew and is compatible with the residential character of the neighborhood, and the volumes of traffic will be below that noted for hospice at levels that have been anticipated from the initial projected volumes. We've addressed the issue of the decline in volumes. There are other issues that I consider less relevant. I'd be glad to go into those in greater detail if we get into that, but keeping them short, the hospital has plenty of property, it's main location, that's not the case. We do not, and if I need to address each one of those individually, I would. The hospital wanted to consolidate their properties for efficiency to the HM zone. It's true, Santa Fe had unique issues with neighborhoods and with surrounding properties, and we wanted to create an HM zone, but that did not mean we had other properties that would be the only place we would ever function and operate at. We have the children's center at our former Penn campus. We have a, an IT center that's going in over there. Our intent was not to consolidate everything to one location, but for the things we did have at that location, to be able to grow those at that space. There was a lot of discussion about commercializing the facility. Quite honestly, anytime you provide a surface for money, you're providing a commercialization. Hospice inpatient is a commercial facility, and we see very little change in that. We're providing medical care for persons, and we're not developing a retail center. There were a couple of things that came up at the end of the meeting that I don't know are relevant here, but there's a suggestion that we go to the north side of the building to create an entrance if it were allowed. At this time, we'd propose that not be considered or in further consideration. It doesn't change anything. The traffic doesn't change. The number of persons changing, it doesn't change anything. It simply puts a blight and a shadow over a program that should not receive one. We did agree the original conditions that were for hospice would continue to be met related to landscaping and type of facility. There was one suggestion that maybe if it were allowed, we shouldn't be allowed to grow the facility longer. I would ask that not be considered further as if it goes, moves ahead. At this time, I would want to introduce Linda Simpson. There are three or four other conditional things that were addressed, and let her present information to, to provide about Veridian itself, which I think would be useful to all commissioners.
Thank you, and I would encourage each, each person not to repeat any, any ground that he's already covered for us.
Question for him.
Yeah. Sir, before you leave, let's go ahead and entertain any questions that we might have for you right now, and then we can proceed on.
Okay.
Is there any questions of-
Still?
I wanted to make sure I understood you on the traffic count. From looking at the testimony of the planning commission, looks like they talked about an additional sixty to eighty vehicle trips. Right now, the average day, there's twenty to thirty cars in and out, so we're talking eighty to a hundred and ten trips in and out.
Sure.
You referenced the number two hundred and eighty-eight daily trips. Was that at full capacity with twelve beds or full capacity with twenty-four?
Twenty-four beds.
And right now, it's zoned and approved to have twenty-four beds?
It is.
Okay.
One thing, Mr. Jennings, I guess I would say I would have a closing comment, so this would not be my only appearance here, if acceptable, but it would be a much more brief thing after the folks have a chance to make their comments here.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Linda Simpson, Director of Psychiatric Services for Salina Regional. I'm a registered nurse, a licensed clinical professional counselor, and a nationally certified counselor through the National Board. I want to start by sharing with you information out of mental health, first aid. It's funded by the National Council for Community Behavioral Health, the State of Missouri and the State of Maryland. Stigma is a cluster of negative attitudes and beliefs that motivate, motivate the public to fear, reject, avoid, and discriminate against people with mental illnesses. Stigma assumes many forms, subtle and overt, that can negatively affect areas of all their lives, housing, employment, accessing services. It affects their ability to access care, quality of care, and perhaps most of all, it creates a situation where they feel negative and they internalize that. To put all of this into perspective, and this is out of their data also, mental disorders are common in the U.S. One in four adults have a mental disorder from the national survey that was completed- From the national survey that was completed, 26.2% of adults have experienced something in their lifetime. So this equals out to about 57.7 million people. When you look specifically at anxiety disorders, 40 million Americans are affected by that every year. Depression, 21 million. Of our kids aged 13 to 18, 9% struggle with ADHD or other type of learning disabilities. So overall, the CDC says that 25% of U.S. adults struggle with this at some point in their lifetime. So when you look at the mental health aspects, and then we bring in the divorce rates, unfortunately, 50% of all first marriages, 67% of second marriages, and 74% of third marriages end in divorce. What we do at Veridian Behavioral Health is unique, and it's different from a community mental health center like Central Kansas Mental Health. The majority of what we do is geared towards individuals and families that are struggling with common life problems, parent-child interactions, divorce, depression, anxiety, marital issues. What we provide for is family counseling, marriage counseling, Christian counseling, life transition, where that's when we tie in with hospice quite a bit on end-of-life issues. We work with people who have serious medical conditions, after a heart attack, a stroke, things such as those. We test kids in the community to help them qualify for additional services through the school systems. We complete local law enforcement, we do their evaluations before employment, we do those exams. We do training for the Kansas Highway Patrol. We do the Department of Transportation evaluations for them also. We work with active-duty military, National Guard troops and their families. We also serve OCCK clients. Dr. Cox and Angela Corbridge, our nurse practitioner, make nursing home rounds in the community. And then a large percentage of what we do, which David Morris is the team leader for Veridian, which has helped us with, but we do employee assistance programs in the community for Phillips Lighting, Tonys, Great Plains, United Postal Service, Crestwood, One Oak, United Way. We partner with Central Kansas Mental Health Centers, so if they have an employee that's struggling, we help them. Linsburg Hospital, any city of Salina employees struggling, they're referred to us, state of Kansas employees, Salina Regional Health Center, Sunflower Bank, First Presbyterian Church, we just recently partnered with First Baptist Church, not as much, not as frequently, but ADM and X-Side, and we also work with Blue Beacon. I'm going to have David Morris explain our hours of operation and kind of what that looks like.
I'm David Morris, the team leader for Veridian. Our hours are Monday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and then Tuesday through Thursday, we are 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Most of our hours are done prior to 5:00 p.m., even on those days. And on Fridays, we're open till 5 o'clock, or open 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
If you could approach?
Yeah, well, with the commission's approval.
Yes, ma'am.
These are just for sure.
You never know. I better take two.
I have another packet. If I could approach with one more packet for you?
Is it printed material as well, or is it summarized material?
It's printed.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
We've been questioned why we'd put hospice and mental health services together. My packet includes information from the American Psychological Association and the National Institute of Health. There's several articles for them that I printed off for you to review. Prior to any administrative conversations about finances, our leadership team was working with the hospice director to figure out a way that we could partner. If you look at this information, it makes sense why you would blend these two programs together. I think to have two programs to meet the needs of the community, you really want hospice and mental health services intertwined together. Veridian therapists already provide services to the family members while hospice staff take care of the dying patient. By being in the same location, you wouldn't have family members running back and forth between our building and their building to access those services. When a hospice patient is struggling with unmanaged anxiety and depression, they'll be able to partner with us, and we can send a clinician down the hallway to work with the patient in the room. Psychiatric Services Journal talks about the importance of the physical health, the quality of life, and the ability to respond to disease-modifying treatments, and how important it is to interweave these two services together. It does say that studies have suggested in these settings, significant psychiatric symptoms are prevalent, often unacknowledged, unassessed, and undertreated. And so our goal is hopefully to be underneath the same roof so we can work together. I do have another set, but it's pulled together, of information. The question was on referencing the clients that we work with and safety to the neighborhood, so I do have another packet. I know that a few times, our clients reference antisocials, and that's not fair, and it's not accurate. Most people with antisocial personality disorders, and this comes from the Department of Health, remain undiagnosed and untreated. They do not come into contact with mental health services, and often do not perceive any need for treatment of their personality disorder. So those are the ones that probably are not going to come in and access our services. So it's kind of uncharacteristic of them. The first concern that was brought up at the last meeting was the fact that on occasion, we have worked with Sheriff Kokonowski, and he's brought inmates over to be assessed. They can't be a threat to themselves or others. A lot of times, it's maybe a drug and alcohol evaluation. So after, and I couldn't even remember the last time he'd brought anybody over, so I had emailed him, which is the first copy that you have, asking him how frequently this happens. And as you can see, as you read through this, he says, you know, usually they're referred to Larnard or they go to the community mental health center. And he says, "All that we deal with are taken to the various places above, and after being seen by professionals, they're either released or referred on." I hope this helps. "I don't know where the dangerous concept comes from, because almost all people we deal with are fighting with their own personal battles and need help. The majority that the sheriff's office deals with are seen by the Central Kansas Mental Health inside our facility." And even though I struggled with this, and I struggle with the fact that they have every right to access services, the second page that you have there is basically saying to him that we moved our psychiatrists to another location on May 21st, and that's within the hospital, and that we will continue to serve them like we do now, but in the event we're able to use the hospice space, I told Sheriff Kokonowski that he would no longer be able to bring them to our location, and that we'd make every effort to see them at the jail if that would be helpful to him. And he emailed me back this morning saying he understood and would do whatever it takes to help us. I went through two after what sounded like allegations about our clients being criminals, references to the playground, which sounded a little like child offenders. I went through the Seline County Sex Offender Registry, which shows everyone registered for violent sex or drug-related issues. There's 181 people, and of those 181, we serve one person, and it's not a sexual issue. You also have copies from the Infant Child Development Program, serves small children. We have shared space with them, the same parking lot, the same bathrooms, the same stair walls. We have never had an incident with a child or family, never had a complaint. And you also have a letter from Salina Urology's office manager stating, "Over the last five years, our association with Veridian has been a good one. We have not had any negative incidents with the Veridian clients, nor have we ever had any concerns. I'm sad to lose the friends that I've made from next door." And I also, in their listed, gave you some statistics on children. It's the National Children's Alliance Statistical Fact Sheet that states that when children are hurt, the majority of them is from parent or stepparent, or someone else related to them, or a victim knew their perpetrator. So I just wanted to make sure that you had accurate facts on that also. I do know that, I was looking over something that was handed out today. Ms. Ritter, when she did hers, I have never met with her, and I wish I would have so I could have explained what we do and the services we provide before she gave her assessment of what we do. And also, this one from Gardner's in Wichita, again, I have never visited with them, but I do know the two appraisers that we worked with had to talk to me, wanted something written from me, and then had follow-up phone calls before they would ever commit to anything on paper. But I have not talked to Ritter or this Gardener. But I do want to point out on this one from Gardener that I just handed a little bit ago, I do think there's huge demographic differences between Cedric County and Seline County. And I do want to point out that COM Care is their community mental health center, which is similar to Central Kansas Mental Health here. It's not what we do. If you look them up on their website, they serve severely and emotionally disturbed people. They get the funds from the state to do that, and we do not. I do want to point out a couple more facts here. When you look at mental illness and the stigma that surrounds it, a person struggling from a mental illness is two and a half times more likely to be a victim of a violent crime than to perpetrate someone else. People with mental illness, for instance, are no more likely than anyone else to harm strangers. Violent behavior by anyone is generally aimed at family and friends rather than strangers, and it typically happens in the home and not in public. We do have Dr. Yurkovich here today to help answer questions, if there's any questions specific to the clients that we serve. And I do want to take an opportunity to, and I struggle with this morally and ethically, but I feel like to put a face and a voice to mental health, I do have four clients that have stepped forward to share with you. Shasta, and I don't know where she's at, there she is, just wants to briefly share
Hello. I'm Shasta Laduke. Can you hear me? And I'm currently a Veridian client, Veridian client, and I've been a Veridian behavioral health since 2012, January. And I initially received counseling services as a result of a traumatic injury I sustained at work. In that workplace accident, I had lost my leg, and as you can imagine, it was too much for me to manage on my own, and I couldn't cope with being an amputee. And I was parenting three kids, and I was used to being very physically active and very independent. And I was in shock, and I was grieving, I was scared, I was isolated, depressed, and anxious, and I didn't know if I could make it. It wasn't before, I wasn't before, and I'm still not a dangerous person, I'm just a person that needed some help. And once I completed my counseling and worked through the loss of my limb and the prolonged exposure counseling, I decided to start counseling with another therapist who specializes in family counseling to assist me, being the best parent I can be for my kids, because this loss didn't just affect me. So I really enjoy Veridian and the help that it's given me, and I hope that they're able to go along with their move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Darren Griffin, and I am current Veridian client. Linda Simpson has been working with me during my divorce. Initially, we were working on ways to try and save my marriage, but once I realized my wife wasn't coming back, we switched to focus on working on life after divorce. We also focused on supporting my two younger boys. As I have worked through this process, I've realized that not every person in psychological distress has a mental disorder. I've also realized there is no shame in asking for help. Now I know that sometimes life just happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been a regular customer of Veridian Mental Health, and prior to that, Central Kansas Mental Health, and every time I've gone in there, there've been people like myself who look like me. And I don't think some of the people in the neighborhoods who are concerned about that are too concerned when I go fishing with them or walk into their place of business. So I... Friendly jab. The other thing is, I don't want Salina to be known as making a decision based on some of those characterizations. I think that's something we need to guard against.
Hi, I'm Travis Kuschel. I'm an Iraq War veteran and a former Veridian client. While serving with the 101st Airborne, my infantry squad was on a patrol in 2003 when I was hit by a grenade. They offered to send me home for medical treatment, but I refused and decided to not return home without my unit. Shortly after returning home, I started to struggle with what I now know as post-traumatic stress disorder symptoms. I struggled in silence for several years before friends and family convinced me to seek help through Veridian. My Veridian therapist, Mark Crowe, was the first one to diagnose me with PTSD and fought for me to get into treatment. I was able to access the appropriate services through the VA so my healing process could begin. I'm currently completing my social work degree and working in child advocacy. Because of everything that I've worked through, like so many others, I'm shocked that the stigma surrounding mental health still exists. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just in summary, I hope that you'll allow us to blend these two programs together after you look at the research and the data that supports that what we're doing is the right thing to do for this community. Thank you.
Are there any questions for ladies that just...
Pastor William Salmon, 744 South 10th, Salina, Kansas. United Methodist pastor, retired. I'd like to comment on the issue before us. There have been such great presentations that deserve so much support. However, I'm uncertain that we're still talking about the property for hospice. And I have previously, in five years of my retirement, served as a volunteer chaplain for hospice. And I just want to put a word in for the dying. If you've been on this property, you can sense the great sense of peace that's there, and the people and the families who come there experience that same sense of peace. This is holy ground. It's Valhalla. It is Buellaland, and I think it's a place in which that we can leave it the same it is, that people can come there and meet the opportunity to die in dignity and in the self-service of people that come to minister to them, and then that they can also greet whatever life beyond. And I think it is important that, since you have the opportunity, to refer this back to the city planning committee, bring their recommendation to you, and then make a final decision and settle it. Thank you very much.
My name is Virginia Morris, and I live at 731 Holly Lane. I am surprised that the hospital has appealed the 5-2 decision by the Planning Commission. They stayed in their proposal that they wished to bring Veridian Counseling Center down and put them in the hospice of Salina Building. At the April 17th meeting, local appraisers' opinions were read, stating that the presence of Veridian would significantly depreciate the value of our property and of all the properties north and south of us. Besides the fact that we would not live with Veridian across the street from us, according to one appraiser, when we sell our home, realtors may not even show our house because many banks will not make loans on homes in mixed-use neighborhoods. Also, one of the appraisers said that putting Veridian across the street Also, one of the appraisers said that putting Veridian across the street from our house would create a 50 to 99% decrease in the value. Because of the type of service that Veridian provides, it would also seem incompatible as a partner for Hospice of Salina. Patients and their family members come to Hospice of Salina to spend their final days in the serenity that our area provides. The addition of Veridian would seem to compromise this atmosphere. I ask that you support the planning commission's decision.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dana Morse, 731 Holly Lane. I think you guys are the lucky ones, you only had to hear me do this once, Jenny's heard it about 10 times. Just a brief history, in 99, Jenny and I looked at that old, beat-up farmhouse down there. And I got to tell you, I hope it's not historic, because we really redid that house. And before we closed on that house, I came and talked to Dean Andrew, and I said, Dean, what can happen down there in that area? And he said, well, the problem has always been, and Dean alluded to this, there's never been 51% of the property owners down there would ever support a road. That's what killed Matt Wagner's development, is he couldn't get a majority of the people down there, the landowners, to ever support a road. So we went ahead and bought the house and remodeled it, and it was about five years later that Hospice made application to put their facility down there. And if my remembrance is right, they still didn't have 51% of the property owners, but the city decided, really for the good of the community and for the good of that area, there needed to be a road down there, and that made this, Hospice, may be the only opportunity to put a road in down there. And so that application was approved, and again, I think some of the hope was Hospice would be down there, it would be residential, and the road would facilitate the development of the lots, especially the lots to the north of me. Now, again, Hospice moved in, and they've been very residential in nature. They've been good neighbors for us. It's seven years since that road went in, seven years since we've been paying specials on our lots. And we finally have a developer interested, and I know Jack had said, well, it's kind of an allegation, but I also know that Mr. Welsh spent quite a bit of money doing some engineering, some architectural work, to figure out how to develop that lot, because when I talked to him, he talked about, well, all the trees along the north side that you saw in the pictures blocking the view of the people up on Victoria Heights, and I'll just use that Victoria Heights. Keep in mind that that east side of Holly Lane was Victoria Heights, too, but we don't kind of get in that category, we're not on the ridge. But anyway, he was going to remove all those trees and trying to develop condos in there. And I told Todd at the time, I certainly supported condos, I thought they could enhance the area, and certainly we'd have some development there. I think at the time, he was talking about in the value of $200,000, $260,000 homes with 150, $160 maintenance fees for it. So it sounded like a really good development. You know, when I first heard about Todd putting that development in, I told a coworker at work about possibly being condos down there, and he says, you know, that'd be a great place for an elderly relative of mine. And he contacted Todd and started to work on it, and then just a couple of months later, I says, you know what, there's been an application to make that a commercial use down there for Veridian. And he immediately stopped and bought a place at Merrymount for his elderly relative. That was just on the thought of it becoming commercial with Veridian, hasn't even been approved yet. Again, it's seven years since that lane, Holly Lane, was developed to city standards. We finally have some interest in those lots getting developed. It meets your comprehensive plan for infill inside the city. It'll add new construction to the tax rolls, and if approved, our first hope is fleeting, at best, that that will be developed. We've talked about the hospital overlay district. I remember, I think I worked for the county back when that was happening, and the whole idea, the whole concept behind creating that district was to make it easy for the hospital to consolidate all of their uses into one area. And at that time, we took out quite a few commercial businesses, some residents, and some historic buildings, so that the hospice, or, excuse me, so the hospital could cluster their uses together. It seems odd that that hospital overlay district no longer applies now that Hospice has a financial problem. The zoning ordinance for Salina allows hospitals in an R1 zone as a conditional use permit. And I don't know exactly why that would happen. I looked at the zoning regulations for Wichita, Hutchinson, and Manhattan, none of those allow hospitals in R1 zoning district. Interesting, Wichita, Sedgwick County allows them in the undeveloped rural area if they're there first, and other uses come around them. But when the other area is developed or is developing as commercial, they're not allowed in the lower R1-type districts. I'm speculating that back when that regulation was developed, it was developed to address traditional hospital services. And we all know, not just our hospital, but hospitals across the country, their services expanded. They do far more than what old guys like me remember hospitals doing. Have a whole bunch of services now. So as our zoning regulations are written here, any use under the hospital umbrella can be in an R1 zoning district as a conditional use permit. So because Veridian is under the hospital umbrella, they could make application for a conditional use permit and be here. They don't need to be contiguous with the hospital, it can be anywhere in town. If you look at our other mental health facilities around, they're all in commercial zones because they're not under the hospital umbrella. They could not make application to move into a residential area because of the zoning If this application is approved, there's really not one residential district in Salina that's safe from the hospital spinning off of business and putting it in that residential area, because the precedent will have been set. Now Hospice of Salina is very residential in nature. Again, as I said, we're very happy with them, and even when they're at their busiest, they're residential in nature. Their traffic represents residential traffic. Most of the people who visit there will come and spend an extended period of time visiting their loved ones. Take a break, they may go to lunch, they may stay through lunch and go to dinner, they may come back in the evening, but it's very residential-like in traffic. It's not commercial, it's not by appointment. They provide a great setting for their patients and a great service for the community. But I want you to imagine that you've just lost a family member at Hospice of Salina, and you need to step out for just a moment to gather your thoughts, and you have to share that once peaceful setting with 15 patients waiting for their appointments at Veridian. Now I'm a little confused about what the hospital's saying about the future of Hospice of Salina. When I talked to the Hospice board members, they say the hospital is committed to keeping us there, and I hope so, I truly do. When I met with Veridian staff and some hospital staff, when they were explaining what they planned on doing, and the services they planned on providing at Hospice, I asked them, what's going to happen if Hospice still can't support themselves in five years? And the answer was, well, we just can't predict the future. It's a good indication to me that the hospital may not be that committed to keeping Hospice At one time, I proposed that Hospice of Salina consider buying out Hospice of Kansas. That seems to be one of the reasons that I'm hearing that Hospice of Salina is struggling, is because we now have two hospice facilities there. And I was told the opposite would need to happen. Hospice of Kansas would need to buy out Hospice of Salina. Still doesn't sound like to me someone who wants to keep Hospice of Salina open. Now, the hospital agrees that Veridian's a very fast-growing service, and you've heard the statistics just a few minutes ago about how many potential patients are in our community and nationwide. And I would guess that it has to be fast-growing in order to have the financial income to support not only itself, but to pay the debt for Hospice. I just wonder how long, with that kind of growth, how long it'll be before Hospice is pushed out and I see 100% commercial activity at the old hospice building. At the planning and zoning staff on the 17, planning and zoning meeting, excuse me, on April 17, after the meeting, hospital staff told me that if their application is denied, they'd need to let the building go derelict. Now, over the course of this entire application process, I've made three offers to the hospital to come meet with us, us, the neighborhood, and to discuss more compatible uses that we feel should be down there. It's evident that, it appears to me, I've not seen the budget, so I shouldn't say it's evident, but it sounds like Hospice of Salina is not going to be able to afford to be there and pay their bills. I think we probably all agree from what we've heard that's the case. But I think there are more compatible uses that can be in a residential area and still keep Hospice of Salina there. I've not had one call from the hospital to say, we'd like to meet with you neighbors and discuss these possible options. Again, I just don't think that's neighborly. We tried to explore options. At the planning and zoning, we suggested maybe they bring their sleep clinic, the hospital's sleep clinic down there, seems like a reasonable use to move down there. They have doctor recruitment, which are offices, I agree, they're commercial, but probably pretty compatible in a residential area. We suggested possibility of selling to a nursing home. Seems like the good nursing homes around here have about a two-year waiting list to get in. We even found a potential buyer for Hospice, contacted the hospital about it, and they said, no, we want to run this application through the system before we would even discuss that option. It makes me think there's more to moving Veridian, there's more that's driving the move to Veridian than we're really hearing. During that same meeting with Veridian staff, one of the members there told me that they would not hesitate to live next door to Veridian Services, and I certainly offered them the opportunity to buy my house, but I didn't have any takers. That offer still stands, if somebody wants to buy my house today at appraised value, it's certainly available. Now, I've heard a lot of testimony, and so have you, about the type of patients that Veridian is planning on bringing down there. The only thing I hope is that you visit their website to see the type of patients they advertise that they would like to treat. Because if you look at that site, it says, we treat anger management, bipolar, and substance In, since 2007, not just in Salina, but nationwide, there have been thousands of businesses who have closed. And disregard the bailouts, but just about all of those businesses would have loved to transfer their financial conditions or their poor financial decisions over onto someone else. That's actually what's happening in this case. The hospital wants to move Veridian Services down there, and you'll hear from another appraiser, you're going to get every appraiser in the country here today, talk about the potential impact it'll have on our home. And it's just a transfer of that, it's just allowing them to transfer their debt over onto us. Now, in, on that April 17 meeting, I did present an appraiser's opinion that said 50 to 99% reduction in value. And I don't know if you've had a chance to look at that appraisal, but the reason, the method she used to drive that decision was Ellie Ritter is also a realtor, and she interviewed 10 potential home buyers, and described the situation to them, and 10 out of 10 said, no, we wouldn't buy that home. Again, I know 50 to 99% sounds high, but if you don't have a buyer and that buyer can't get a loan, your home's worthless when you want to sell it. Now, I asked a second local appraiser to take a look at that, and he agreed that an outpatient mental health clinic in a residential area would have a negative impact on property values in the immediate area. He suggested it'd be more in the 30% range. He recommended denial, and that the hospital look for a more compatible use. I also interviewed 14 local realtors and asked them what their thoughts were on reduction of value. The average was 17.5% reduction. When a buyer looks at a home and they're told there's a mental health facility next door, outpatient or whatever it may be, they immediately perceive something negative. You cannot overcome perception. It doesn't matter if that perception is correct or not, the perception is, when you're told something that there's a mental health facility next door, you perceive something negative. The vast majority of homeowners certainly would have a concern if they were looking at my home and visited that same website I talked about. I think, and again, I don't know how much of the planning commission information you had, I had an opportunity to discuss, but I had an opportunity on right of first refusal that there was a letter included in that original packet that that person said if this was approved, he would certainly decline his right of first refusal. I talked to Nancy Lowry, she's with the Nancy Lowry School of Real Estate, they teach classes throughout Kansas and Missouri, and I talked to her about this situation, and she advised me that if this is approved, I'd need to advertise my home as a stigmatized home. Stigmatized home has put you in the same category as a home of a murder scene. And I think we all know what happens with those homes, there's a negative value to those, a reduced value. And that wouldn't apply just to me, but that would apply to the lots north of me. The planning commission was the first to identify this change in use. And again, there's some dispute about the figures of whether it's 1/3 or 25%. I'm going to use these figures, because that's what's in front of me. The hospice currently is 25% commercial. If you approve the Veridian, it would be 75% commercial. The hospice is residential-like, Veridian is not compatible in a residential use. Their traffic is not residential in nature. You can talk all you want about traffic volumes, but when you talk about the type of traffic between a residence, a person that goes to work, comes home, takes the kids to the ballgame, and whatever people with kids do, ours is an empty nest, so I don't remember that, but whatever people with kids do, it's not like having 12 people down there having appointments every 30 to 45 minutes. Again, I just wonder how long it would be before this facility would be 100% commercial. We all know how, when you approve a conditional use permit, they have a tendency to morph into more than you ever intended them to be.
Mr. Morse, as you conclude or carry on, I would ask you not to duplicate your own points, which I understand that point, but I would just ask you to refrain from that in the interest of time. We have all the time in the world, but we also have...
All right, thank you for that. Sounds like my wife.
I'll take that as a compliment, thank you.
Well, I listen to her. The planning commission also recognized the impact on the neighborhood, and you have their reasons for denial. I've got those here, but thanks for that, and I'll just skip over that. The one thing they didn't point out is the emotional cost. In closing, two appraisers' opinion that you have a negative impact, I ask you not to get caught up in the percentages. You know, we always hear that, well, you can get an appraiser to say anything you want him to say, depending upon whether you're a buyer or seller, and certainly there's a range there, but I ask you not to get caught up in that. The fact is, there'll be some negative impact there. The planning commission vote, 5 to 2 to deny it. I want to point out that it was actually 6 to 2, because I can just about guarantee you Todd Welsh would have voted against that had he not had to step down. I support their recommendations. I'm trying not to reiterate, okay? If you approve this application, there are actually only two winners. The hospital... The hospital, because they'll be able to transfer their financial debt over onto us, and Hospice of Kansas. You just gave them the best advertising tool they could ever ask for. Alls they have to do is say, "We have a competitor that has a mental health facility in their building." Now, please don't feel that a vote to deny or to uphold the planning commission recommendations will cause the, will cause Hospice of Salina to close or to go derelict. Our neighborhood still wants to work with the hospital to find a better use that's more compatible with the neighborhood, that will help us as neighbors in the city of Salina to keep Hospice of Salina open. There are some neighbors here that spoke at the planning commission that have indicated they don't want to speak now, they've already said their piece at the planning commission. I might ask if they just, if it's okay, just stand up so you know kind of what that group is, or...
Yeah, in, in recognition of, that'd be fine, you can have anybody stand. We did that last week when somebody says, "Stand up if you're in favor." But as well, they are, they are welcome to come and just state their name and address and they're in favor. They will not be seen if you have them stand up here, so it might not show the citizens at large, everybody that's in the crowd, that's a neighbor that's in support or opposed to this.
I'll leave it up to the neighbors.
Very good.
Any questions of me?
The only one I've got is, we keep talking about the real estate value, have they ever actively tried to sell those lots along there? I don't ever remember in all my years of real estate ever seeing signs there, or have they tried?
It's kind of an interesting situation. Leonard Knox owns the lot next to Crawford in Holly Lane, and at one time he dug a hole up there...
I see, it was a little something.
...to prove that he could put a basement on that lot, and he had a big sign up there, a big banner type thing.
Right, I remember this.
Said, "Lot for sale." Todd Welsh's lot's been up there for quite a while. Darrell Feist, no, not so much. The lot north of me had a "For Sale" sign on it for quite a while after, after the road went in.
Uh-huh. Yeah, I just, yeah, I didn't remember them even actively being for sale, I just...
Yeah. Again, as, as I talked to Todd, and don't owe me the figure, it was like $10,000 or $15,000 to clear those trees off and level that up so it could be developed, so it certainly is developable.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
I'm Jim Gardner, I'm a real estate appraiser from Wichita, Kansas. I am appearing on behalf of Dana Morris and Jenny, his wife, 731 Holly Lane, in opposition to the proposed change requested by Salina Regional Health Center in conditional use O3-2B, seeking to convert their existing hospice center at 730 Holly Lane to a clinical treatment center for behavioral therapy. I'm a Kansas-certified general real estate appraiser, 45 years in the profession. The majority of my practice the last 20 years is in litigation-related appraisal work for the courts and attorneys and, and parties disputing values or damages. I served 12 years on the Wichita-Sedwick County Metropolitan Planning Commission, chaired it, also served on the subdivision committee, chairing that, majority of that time. Served on the Tri-County Planning Commission for Sedwick, Harvey, and Butler County, and the Kansas Association of Regional Planning Commissioners as both a commissioner and chairman over the years. I have not appraised the Morris property, but I'm sharing with you my observations regarding the probable negative impacts and its diminished value resulting from the proposed changes converting the hospice center to a clinical treatment center. The crux of the subject conditional use is whether or not the proposed shift in facility use from that of a residential hospice center to that of a behavioral treatment clinic is an appropriate use in our single-family residential zoning. If the proposed behavioral treatments clinic is not compatible or an appropriate use in our single-family residential zoning, the conditional use application should be denied and the applicant redirected to a more appropriate location and zoning district. Staff analysis has determined that the hospice facility is presently 2/3 residential and 1/3 office area. Under the proposed change, the faculty, the facility would become 3/4 office and treatment space and 1/4 residential space according to staff calculations. While hospitals and related facilities are a conditional use allowed in our district, and because the hospice facility was characterized as a residential-type use at the hearings in 2003, the hospice use apparently found sufficient favor for approval of that residentially compatible conditional use. Salina zoning districts proceed from the most restrictive use residential to the least restrictive industrial. The first zoning district which allows medical offices and clinics as permitted uses is the hospital medical overlay district. The medical offices and clinics continue to be permitted uses in the C1 restricted business district as professions, as business and professional offices, and medical and dental clinics and guidance centers. Medical and dental clinics continue to be permitted uses in subsequent commercial districts. Staff suggests the role of the planning commission and the city commission in this case is to first determine whether the applicant's proposed change in use from a hospice facility with 12 living units to a primarily medical office facility would have any negative impacts on the surrounding neighborhood, and to secondly, address the conceptual site plan issues. Planning staff believes that proposed Veridian behavioral health occupancy would be a change in the character and the intensity of use from a facility that is primarily residential in character, a hospice, to one where hospital-related administrative offices and clinical treatment space would become the predominant use. While located in a residential-type building, the proposed predominant use would be that of a medical office and clinic with the accompanying traffic and clientele. At this point, and I don't wish to, to in any way impugn Veridian or bash their services or their clientele, I applaud them, I sincerely do, but I want to make clear that we need to be open-minded about this, and what we're considering here is not the specifics of whether Veridian is an appropriate use, but whether the use of that facility in a residentially zoned area as a clinical treatment facility is appropriate. Mr. Handlenkamp has already, in previous meetings, indicated that they've changed their plans because of economics and the use of the hospice facility, and they find now that it would be appropriate to introduce an alternative use as a clinical treatment facility. From my perspective, until we explore the wide range of, of mental health services and behavioral health services that are presently offered in the spectrum of, of that health treatment today, we haven't been able then to address yet what's being proposed for the subject site. The young lady who made the presentation for Veridian, I think, made an excellent case of presenting their current clientele and their current business operation, but I would tell you that as economics change, and as funding programs change, and as medical needs change, these programs and emphasis on treatment are also subject to change. And if you approve a conditional use today based on one specific set of treatments and clientele, you don't have any control over an economic shift a year from now, two years from now, five years from now, to a different category of treatment, or the inclusion of a wider, broader spectrum of folks needing treatment that would fall under mental health and behavioral health treatments. That today is, is the risk factor. And since you won't have, if you approve it, any micro-control or micromanagement control over what transpires in the future, that needs to be taken into consideration, in your consideration of the appropriateness of introducing this as a conditional use in the residentially zoned category. There are numerous office spaces throughout the city of Salina that are available for Veridian to locate in, in medical parks and other areas where they would be an appropriate use category, an appropriate zoning, and would have more than adequate facilities. But to introduce this use category of behavioral health treatment into the residential area under a conditional use is to open the door and lose all control over what may occur in the future. Without, without going into an overly great description, let me tell you that I officeed for five years next door to Calm Care's Crisis Intervention Services. Have been good friends with a number of the professionals there over the years. They're a wonderful group, I applaud their work, and, and believe me, they have a tough job with, with the services they provide. The difficulty is that the, the range of services that they're providing now at that particular location has changed over time for them too. Calm Care has a number of facilities in Sedwick County and in Wichita, and they have, have moved various programs from one facility to another through that course of time, depending on which location best suited which services. In the course of that, the services offered next door, well, they, they shifted to primarily the, those who were on diversion and, and court-ordered participation in these services. That ranged from probationary drug testing and drug treatment, ordered medications, individual and group counseling. It included a broad range of socially troubled from bipolar and manic to addiction-related. It included detox, recoveries, recidivism, and counseling. They had their share of pedophiles and, and other people, all of whom were there for, for counseling and assistance and help, and I don't deny that they needed it certainly, but that was the address to which they were being sent and those services provided. The difficulty I had is that they congregated at my front door. We were separated by a, a small partition, and our front doors were next door to each other. Those who arrived early and were waiting for an appointment would congregate outside, smoking, talking, and, and generally passing time, and the same was true for those who left their appointments and were waiting on rides to pick them up. The point is that an approval of, of a conditional use for behavioral health treatment and, and a clinic in this location today does not preclude that that might eventually occur at the subject site, and that's a risk that would have potential detrimental ramifications for adjacent properties. That kind of a use and that kind of a facility needs to be more properly located in an appropriate zoning district that's suited for office and commercial and professional offices, and does not impact adversely the surrounding neighborhood. To progress just briefly into the issue of, of value impact, I've not appraised Mr. Morris's property, but I can tell you that in the course of, of a number of years of looking at distressed properties, properties with stigma, whether it is murders having been committed in them, whether it is issues of rape that were committed at properties, whether it was issues of underground, of water pollution, or other environmental issues, stigma, when it occurs, is something that is, is difficult to displace, and it is a real function in today's world. The courts have held that, that where the buying public is concerned of something of this nature, whether it's factual or well-founded or not, if it influences their buying decision, the court recognizes that as a, as an influence that negatively affects values. It could positively affect values, but I haven't run across that situation yet. The usual thing that occurs in this circumstance, when a buyer places the property on the market, is they have to discount it sufficiently to make it attractive to people who would be considering a similar property to the subject property, but without the stigma. And when that happens, when you have to lower the price of the subject property to make it become a sufficient bargain to become competitive in the marketplace, it's been my finding over the years that that requires a discounting of from 15 to 20% on the front end at a minimum, and that assumes that A, you can find a buyer who'd be willing to, to enter into a circumstance of purchase at that discount, and then it has the additional complication that you'll have a, a lender who's willing to lend with the, the understanding that there is a stigma attached to or that affects the property negatively. And in today's market, as slow as housing has been for several years, that presents a challenge to lenders who are, are under scrutiny from the Frank Dodd bill and, and other regulatory changes insofar as tightening up their underwriting requirements. The, the difficulty that Mr. Morris will encounter, that his Realtor will encounter, that his appraiser will encounter, is that under Kansas law, you're required to disclose any adverse influences or negative factors relative to the property to your buyers prior to the, the sale during the offering period, and that disclosure is an important thing that has to be done. Once the disclosure is made, it becomes imperative to discount the property to be able to compete in the current market. Therein lies the, the problem that you're confronted with today. If you introduce this use under a conditional use in an uncontrolled fashion into a residential district, there isn't any way to call it back. Once you've struck the bell and it's rung, you can't fix it.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just a few, because, because I've got a little real estate background, not 45 years, but, so, I mean, that is true, any stigma, not any stigma actually, some stigmas you cannot disclose, let's be honest. You know, that's a fact.
I do, you're correct.
So, in your definition, anything that adversely affects a property has to be released. Do you realize how long a real estate contract would be in my property on 1117 State Street? My neighbor doesn't mow his lawn, it affects my property value. Guy across the street parks in his yard, it affects us, am I going to write all that stuff in?
You probably wouldn't, and I probably wouldn't, because we draw a line at a reasonable, at a reasonable disclosure factor, but in this instance, you'd be having to, I think, under proper disclosure, state that there was a, a behavioral health treatment clinic across the street from the subject. Good, bad, or indifferent.
Can we have our counsel answer that question for us? I already see a stigma with the high number of people that have died in the building. Can you give us, and maybe we need to go into executive session on that?
I don't think so. I, I would tend to, I think these are required to be, you know, material disclosures, and I think public facts are not something that you can be faulted for in a disclosure. Meaning, there, it's a building there, and they could look up, you know, somebody buying it can look this information up. They're not, they're not hiding anything by, you know, showing the house and then not revealing the fact that there's a hospice and a, and a behavioral health clinic over there. There's a sign, when the folks drive in, I'm assuming that's going to say those things, so I don't think there's going to be a, a disclosure issue for a possible seller. I think certainly you can look at it and say, "This property may affect the value of it as a, as a general matter," but whether that's, I don't think that's properly the equivalent of somebody being murdered in the house, or there being a structural defect that somebody knows about but just doesn't say anything about. I don't think that's the equivalent, so...
Yeah, and the other question I would have there too is...
Pardon me. I, I respect counsel's opinion, but I respectfully disagree.
Okay, that's all right. I'm going to side with the lawyer on this one.
That's fine.
And then you mentioned it somewhere, and I may be incorrect, so correct me if I am wrong, you, you mentioned that the banks won't loan money on stigmatized property.
No. I said that, that dramatically complicates the process of securing a loan, and it increases the likelihood that the bank will decline.
But in, in my experience, and again, you've been at it 45 years, I think I've been licensed for 11, I've never had a bank say, as they're doing a loan, "Hey, is there a stigma attached to this property?" What I've had a bank do is go through their property, or go through their paperwork, look everything over, and see if the appraiser says it meets a lendable value, and then they lend on it. I mean, have you ever had a bank stop you and say, "Hey, does this have a stigma attached to it?" Or do they just go off an appraisal, your appraisal, as a reason?
On an appraisal in a neighborhood description, the appraiser's going to mention that there's a, a bar across the street from the subject property, or, or adjacent behind the property line, and that there have been a number of police reports there with public disturbances. An appraiser's required to, to make mention of those things if they're commonly known or, or if he's aware of them. or, or if he's aware of them. And when that happens, it, it makes the machine go tilt when it hits the underwriter at the lender.
Wichita must be different. I've never seen anything like that on appraisal in Salina, Kansas. Like I said, I haven't done it 45 years. I've never seen anything like that before. And I, and I don't know of any banks that have ever, like I said, asked about anything like that or used that as a guidance. I'm not saying it didn't happen. It may very well happen, but I, boy, sure didn't...
And though it's fun to kind of watch two professionals.
Well, I wouldn't say I'm a professional. I mean, I'd never...
You got 11, you got 11 years at it.
Well, I only got 45. I'd say he's, I'm just, these are just honest to gosh questions. I just, I'd never heard things like that, and it is a little bit interesting.
That's fine. I'm happy to respond.
Very good.
Yep. And Mr. Morris, it is just to ignore percentages, and I think we heard the same thing from Salina Regional. So, the percentages and what could happen and couldn't happen are all over the board. I think we can all clearly see that.
Do, do I understand you've already received a copy of this?
Yes.
Thank you so much then. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
I'm Dr. George Jirkovich. I'm a medical director of the Behavioral Health Services and have been medical director of Central Kansas Behavioral Health Services. I've been practicing in Salina for almost 25 years and am a board certified psychiatrist. And I would just like to clarify one point. First of all, the people, because it's always alluded to the issues, for example, of the previous presenter talking about the people at Calm Care. Now, Calm Care is not anything like Veridian Behavioral Health, and Veridian Behavioral Health will never be anything like Calm Care, because Calm Care is like Central Kansas Mental Health. It is part of the state mental health center system. Veridian Behavioral Health is not part of that, will not be part of that. So, that concern, that's, I just, I think that concern needs to be clarified, because it's not, it's not the same type of service. As to the, I think there may be valid reasons to approve, not approve this based on the legal arguments I've heard, but to allude that it is because of safety issues of our patients, which are basically you and your neighbors, is, I feel overstated. That need not be an issue. There are other legitimate issues which have been aired, but that need not be one of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, would it be, excuse me, go ahead.
I'm Brenda O'Gorman. I live at 705 Victoria Heights Terrace. And I've had kind of a diversified career path in my life. I've been a healthcare executive. I've been a bank officer, and I'm almost, am also a licensed real estate broker in the state of Kansas. The first thing that I would like to say, first of all, is that as a homeowner, I have no ill will towards Veridian. They do a wonderful job in Salina. We're not questioning that, as are, is the hospital. My main concern in this whole thing is, first of all, we've all heard the value of your property is location, location, location. That affects not just the value, but the attractiveness of your property. And so, that's a concern to me. What's a real threat to me, however, is that when this initially came before the Planning Commission and the City Commission to approve hospice, we were assured that what would be approved would remain a residential type facility. And I think that's most of the neighbors' concerns in, in this regard. My real concern is, once we've opened the gate, there's a threat to us that it could be even widened broader to a commercial, more intense zoning situation, because they could then refer back to, well, we already have this. And I think that would be a real injustice to our neighborhood. We are one of the nicer areas in Salina, and we work very hard to keep our properties so that it is an attractive place to live. And so, we would appreciate it if you would concur with the Planning and Zoning Commission on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Stan O'Neill, 271 South Simpson Road. I'm a retired veterinarian here in Salina. I've been here since 66, and Salina's certainly been a fine community for me and my family. Last August, we, my family had the unfortunate necessity to use the hospice facility. It was wonderful. It was peaceful. The many visitors from, around this area were aware of it. The visitors that came from other areas remarked how they either had a facility in their area, but it wasn't like our facility, or they didn't have a facility, and they wished that they had a facility in their area that would compare to ours. I just think that it would be a real shame if we are, if the facility is in some financial distress. I think that it would be a short sighted shame to let anything happen that would, that would not let this facility continue. And if we have a logical solution to the financial distress, I think it would be good to consider it. And I just think we would need to do anything to keep the hospice facility there. It's beautiful. The architecture is beautiful. The landscaping is beautiful. The care and the people that take care of it are beautiful. It certainly adds to the area, and I just think that we need to do everything we can do to keep that facility there and going. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you're going to, if you're going to summate, I'll just make sure that all, you, you have one more appearance, though. I wouldn't want you to rebut and then come back, and it's, I know you said you wanted to summarize.
Rather than summarize, because I think you've gotten a lot of information, there are a couple of points made that I'd like to address. I've known Dana for quite a few years. I have a great respect for Dana. We've worked on committees together. One thing you'd stated is that we had not called them back, but I did want to make it clear that we approached Dana Morris first and talked with he and Jenny about this option. And then I also called, and he said, well, that was great. He understood what we were talking about. I don't know that he was in agreement with it or not. He said, would you mind if I get the neighbors together to meet with you again? And I said, no, that would be great. We would be delighted to have that happen. We did not hear from them. We called them, I called them a week in advance, saying, you know, were you still going to get the neighbors together so we could kind of go over what our plans are and, and our thoughts are and list of that? And, and he said, no, we're not going to do that. He wasn't quite sure how that would come out. So, that, that certainly did happen. I want to make it clear that's not that we were not, we were failing to communicate. We did talk shortly after the meeting about the options. They did present some options. And rather than go into great detail of the administrative process over the last several months, I want to let you know that we did explore from the services that we offer and have available and could support, what could possibly go in there. And that's how we came up with this, because when they mentioned rehab facilities, they need to be close to radiology services. They need, they have people that have strokes. They need cardiology response, those sorts of things.
You can understand there's probably a variety of complexities. I did have a couple of questions for you. One of the questions I think was answered by somebody earlier, but are there other end of life care providers in Salina?
There's Hospice of Kansas.
Okay. So, the one?
There may be others. That's the one I'm, I've heard of.
Okay. And one, one north, is that, was that changed to Veridian? I understand that the hospital had a program at one point in time, or has a program.
We have an inpatient program.
Okay.
At, on the hospital, on our third floor. One north was how it was called for many years. When we renovated in 2008, well, actually started, added our patient tower beginning in 2006 through 2010 in renovations, that we moved it up to third floor. We have an inpatient program there.
Okay, okay. That was it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I guess, sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Few more.
Well, I just had a question, whether or not you're going to have any inpatient, inpatients, Veridian inpatients there.
At this time, those would be outpatient only. Inpatient needs for behavioral health, I mean, they have a difference. So, they come through the ED, they need to be gotten to the, to the unit. So, the answer to that is, we would not intend that at this point in time. We would continue to have the hospice at, at that location. And it's, it's been reiterated by many, but to continue the hospice at that location, we're going to have to find another use for the facility, and we've explored that very hard. In other words, in, in a way to mitigate those costs. Mr. Householder?
My question, I guess, would be, I mean, obviously, this is a touchy subject from a lot of different ways around. I think everybody agrees they appreciate the service that hospice provides and, and doesn't want to see it go anywhere, including the neighbors. But I, I, you know, obviously, I do have a real estate background, and, and property rights are, are important, but, and I'm not, still haven't made up my mind as to whether the traffic count and some of the other things were considered enough. One thing that I would probably, if I did tend to favor in supporting this, some things that I, I would want to see in place, because I think they bring up a valid argument, and it does tend to happen. We allow certain things, and then kind of allow a little more, and then we kind of allow a little more, and that, that can happen. Would the hospital's position be okay, just hypothetically at this point, if, if we were to allow Veridian to go in there as an inpatient to basically say...
Outpatient?
I'm sorry, out, I'm sorry, you're right. Thanks. Outpatient, and that it not expand any further than it is and not encroach on any more of the hospice, basically saying the percentages you give us today. I mean, I, I mean, I would, nothing would make probably everybody in this room happier if hospice had to close for no need. I think we all look forward to that day. But, but anticipating that not happening, would the hospital be okay if we went ahead and said, we're not going to allow you to go any further? We approved this area, no, no inpatient, and no more expansion beyond what you've already got there? How does the hospital feel about that?
Well, I'm not, I'm the best person to speak to that issue, because it's, it's an issue that comes at, at board decisions, but...
That's what I was going to say. Are you, are you authorized to speak with authority to the question, and then you're free to not answer the question?
Sure, sure. And I understand that.
Because if you're here as, as that representative towards that question long-term and where it could go in the answer, then go ahead and please do, but...
I'm, I'm probably not the person to guarantee that sort of thing. I think it is certainly something we would entertain, but we've not answered that question here today. So, if that were a condition, and Dean can probably answer better than I can. When we talked about it at the Planning Commission, it was noted there were, were some conditions that could be applied. You're granted with these conditions, and then that would be something we'd have to either decide to proceed with, or say, well, that just won't work for us, and, and, I don't know, well, we have one option, which we discussed, based on the, on the nature of the financial condition. So, I, I think it would be, something would be entertained. I'm just not in a position to answer that here right now. We are expanding from where we're at right now. Clearly, that's why we have about 5,000 square feet now. We're needing to go to about 8,500 square feet. That should carry us a long time into the future, but I can't address 10, 15, 20, 25 years from now, other than I think there will be more hospice patients at that point in time, based on the nature of the aging population. So, that's one reason, which we didn't talk about here. We wanted to preserve the six patient beds into minimal work to put our outpatient hospice personnel and offices there, because our hope is to get those back into inpatient use. So, we're not really tearing those up. People have got to move into them just like they are, are now. So, our hope is to advance that, but we know $2.6 million in four years lost, that cannot continue, period.
So, again, the anticipation is, and I know when you say hope, you, you don't mean, you hope more people...
We don't hope people ill, but we want to be there for them if they need us.
I understand. So, again, that, it would be the hope that if, if the need is there, that it expands back out?
It would, it would open those, those six beds back up again.
Beds back up, okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you again for your time and consideration today.
Thank you.
I did not call for final public comment. Yes, sir. This is, this would be final public comment, yes. And I, go ahead.
Well, just a, a quick comment, and I appreciate your thoughts about compromise. That's what life's about.
Sure.
My only concern with compromise is, there was a compromise on hospice, and we all agreed it was going to be residential. And if you put conditions on a Veridian approval, and I hate to say this, elected officials, but if you're not here in five years, and there's a new group here, there's nothing to prohibit another application and another lengthy discussion, an expensive discussion on a, on a part of a private homeowner, to bring in witnesses and hire attorneys to defend their property again. It can happen.
Absolutely.
The other thing I, I'm a little confused about is reoccupying the hospice if that need should arise, because it seems to me that the, the wing that was going to be built to allow 24 beds was to go to the north where there are 30 parking spaces, or 30 whatever, however many parking spaces that is, which means the wing for the 24 beds would never be added. So, if you move the staff over into one wing, where are they going to go if you want to convert that back to beds?
That's okay. I think I understand what you're saying, but actually, in essence, it would come right back through the process for a change in use.
Exactly right.
So, we, we could guess all we wanted today, but if it was to revert, it would be changing in nature again.
So, we'd be back.
So, yeah, yeah. So, I appreciate that. Are there any other public comments?
Just so you can see them. I know the public can't.
You can ask them to stand up if you want. I'm not going to.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mayor, I was just going to recommend, due to the quasi judicial nature of this, that we might adjourn to a closed session for 10 minutes or so.
It's appropriate, under statute 754318, that you can go to a, it's not an executive session, but it is a quasi judicial consideration session. The format could be the same as an executive session motion, if you want to limit the time, but you don't have to.
We don't have to limit time like we would have...
It might be an idea for the convenience of the public, but, but that's not, yeah, you don't have to do that.
Okay.
I talk a lot, so if she says 10, it'll be 20, so, but I'll try and be, I'll try and be brief.
Would you want to remove the, the time portion of your motion, as it's not a necessity, or would you want to hold him to?
What'd he say, 20 minutes?
You would not...
No, no, don't give me 20. I'm just, I'm saying...
I think 10 minutes.
10 minutes should be fine. I'd second that.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn with counsel for consideration session. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are now with counsel.
They say when they're doing more harm than good, but he says they shouldn't throw out the baby with the bathwater.
Achieve the same level of success. She's made her own way in the...
We are, we're back in session with a note for the record that this was not completely Commissioner Householder's fault.
That's right. I spoke very little.
Okay, are there any further questions or discussions at this point in time? I would entertain a motion on this matter.
May I make a motion to send back to the Planning Commission with additional facts to consider? One being additional appraisal information. Two, applicant presentation services need to be provided, and some conditions. One being the floor plan limit. Two, outpatient, no overnight, and limit hours of operations, eight to five. Three, 75% office clinical, 25% residential hospice. Additional considerations resulting from Planet, sorry, Planning Commission review, no non-hospital entity and limit in accordance on hospital corporation consistent with current zoning.
I'd second that. I just want a clarification. You, when you say eight to five, you mean for the proposed, the Veridian, obviously not the hospice section?
Right, right, right.
Okay. I, I would second that at this point. Is that inappropriate?
Yes, and I, I just want to make sure that we're on the record...
Please.
...clarifying that, that the additional facts that you want the Planning Commission to consider would be the information that was presented here this evening from the parties, because both had additional discussion of appraisals and, and other persons that addressed the value question, and that should be presented, the stuff that wasn't presented to the Planning Commission should be presented to them. And then the, also, there was a presentation on Veridian services that was more in-depth than what the Planning Commission received, and they should be allowed to hear that and, and review that as well. And the conditions also being that the floor plan limit was that...
And the conditions also being that the floor plan limit was that discussed, I believe during this, this hearing, and I think that's all the other clarifications I had, so thank you.
So we have a, a motion and a second to return this item back to the Planning Commission for further consideration, based upon all the criteria supplied by the City Commission as contained in the motion. And we would then, under that motion, I believe, intend to leave the public hearing open until such time that the matter returns to the City Commission. All those in favor of the motion, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? That motion carries 5-0. We'll provide just a, a brief 30 seconds for anybody that needs to transition out of the room that was here on this matter.
Item 6.1, approved the minutes of May 14th, 2012. Item 6.2, resolution number 12-6905, authorizing an agreement with USD 305, assigning four uniformed law enforcement officers to serve in the School Resource Officer Program. Item 6.3, approve the bicentennial center improvements, phase one. Item 6.4, authorize reimbursement of environmental remediation consulting fees to the Salina Airport Authority. Item 6.5, acceptance of a grant award from the National Recreation and Park Association in the amount of $50,000.
Are there any of those items that a commissioner wishes to have removed from the, the consent agenda? I'd entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Moving on to, we have no development business, so we will move into administration.
Item 8.1, second reading, ordinance number 12-10637, annexing a segment of Magnolia Road from the flood control levee to 300 feet east of Mary, Markley Road, and Markley Road from its intersection with Magnolia Road north to the existing city limits.
This ordinance number 12-10637 was passed on first reading on March 7th, 2012, and since that time, there have been no comments received. Is there anybody here from the public with comments on this matter? Any questions from the commission on this matter? I'd entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance 12-10637 on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 12-10637 on second reading. Would the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Angel?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Jennings?
Aye.
Item 8.2, second reading, ordinance number 12-10639, amending chapter 13 of the Salina Code pertaining to equal opportunity and affirmative action.
And this ordinance was passed last week on first reading at the May 14th meeting. Comments have been received since that time and forwarded to City Commission members. At this time, I will turn it over to city staff to discuss timeline and implementation of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. At the close of your deliberations on first reading, you had asked for certain information relevant to effective dates and implementation of the ordinance. What you have at your place is a summary of what is hopefully helpful information in that regard, and that is also what is shown on the screen for anyone there in the audience. And this is one of those conversations that I will try to go through the information as quickly as I can, knowing that the extent to which you all wish to discuss this is more important than what all I might be able to think I could tell you. I do think it will be one of those situations where you, as a body, will want to identify your objectives, and that will affect significantly how this information might relate to what you may or may not want to do. And of course, if I say anything that sounds like I am advocating a position in any respect, that is inadvertent, and I certainly don't want to do that as I go through this information. What you have on the cover sheet and what is on the screen is a summary of the process by which an initiative and referendum ordinance can be advanced, initiated by petition, of course, necessary for a petitioner to prepare that petition, hopefully with the benefit of legal counsel. We do not, we are not involved in all in that, in that effort. There is provision by state law for county counselor review and approval. That, of course, is based on the fact that the petition could ultimately lead to an election. The election officer is responsible for administering that election, so fortunately, the statute requires that that question be reviewed by the county counselor before any signatures are sought. Assuming that approval can be obtained, that is when the process of obtaining the signatures occurs. That petition is submitted to the city clerk, makes its way down the hall to the office of the county clerk for verification of the signatures. Assuming that there are a sufficient number of signatures following verification, those, the petition comes back to you. You have the option of either approving the proposed question, adopting it, if you will, or calling an election. There are parameters in the statute relevant to the calling of that election. It provides that, the, the statute anticipates that you would call a special election unless there is a regular city election to be held within 90 days. And if so, then you're able to utilize that as the election mechanism. I'll make a note here quickly, my later, I believe it is fair to say, particularly as we anticipate upcoming primary and general national elections, that that 90 days would seem to be a reasonable guideline relative to those dates as well, as we'll see later is, is, takes on some additional importance. The other time factors relating to the calling of the election is that the county election officer must submit all election issues to the company that literally prints the ballots approximately two to three weeks prior to the mailing. Another time factor is that there is the required mailing of ballots to military and overseas citizens. And so, followed by the publication of the election notice, followed by an election. The timing is such, as we looked at this, and if I may, actually take you to the third page, John, does that work to, focusing not so much on the language, but just the options. And hopefully, I've identified the options in terms of what might be your objectives. And if I've missed any, I trust you'll let me know. The first option, of course, is if you want the ordinance to be immediately effective with immediate implementation. Each of the three, each of the three options, as, as we've outlined them, assumes that the ordinance would be effective immediately, but it's a question of when is the, when are the implementation dates? The way the ordinance reads, as it is before you, is the same as option one. Immediately effective with immediate implementation, or is upon publication, which would generally be at the end of the week, following your approval on second reading. Another way to look at that, option two, is making the ordinance immediately effective, but with some form of deferred implementation. One possible objective that you might have, as far as deferred implementation, would just be that, an op, a notice period, an opportunity for whomever, in whatever circumstance, to adapt to the change. That, in looking at, under option two, would be simply a matter of providing that the amend, while the ordinance would be effective immediately, the amendments set forth in sections 1 through 14, and the repealer that's in section 15 of the ordinance, would be effective on a deferred date, whatever you might choose that date to be. If the objective is to set up a scenario where prospective petitioners could possibly utilize the upcoming general election as the means of advancing the question to referendum, potentially, that's where it gets a little more involved, but that is something that if you all wish to consider. In doing the math, particularly with the printing and the mailing of the ballots overseas, it became clear that mathematically, the primary election is not an option. If the intent of the commission is to present a scenario in which petitioners could utilize the upcoming general election, that is feasible, and we do have an indication from the county election officer, Mr. Merriman, that, that could occur without the expense of a special election. So, as I say, I say all that just for your information, not advocating in any respect that you do that, but just so you know that. Looking again at option two, if you simply said, "Well, we want to be sure that there's opportunity for the petition process to go forward, and we don't want to have a reversal, potentially, after a relatively short period of implementation", the simplest matter is, of course, deferring the, the effective date of the commencement until presumably November 7th or some date thereafter. That, that general election is on November 6th. Option three, again, if your objective is to create a scenario in which the general election would be potentially available, but you don't want to simply defer that effective date so long as November 7th or sometime thereafter, there is a somewhat more involved approach that I think, to describe, takes looking back briefly to the calendar that's on page two of what you have. We tried not to throw out any, any more of these dates than we absolutely had to, and I think it, in certain respects, it works more readily to work backwards from November 6th, which is, you can see, is identified there as, as D, that's the date of the general election. We know that in order to meet the requirements of the election officer, that September 21 is the date that those ballots must be mailed to the military and overseas citizens. And if, again, if we work backwards, in order to allow the time that we understand from the election officer's office is necessary to prepare those ballots in anticipation of mailing, it takes you to your September 3rd City Commission meeting date as the last day on which an election could possibly be called and meet all of the other deadlines that are at work. The, if I may take you back then to that language under option three, you'll see that there are two dates that are blank and one date that is present, the date that seemed inviolate if there was any consideration of wanting to allow the general election as being the possible election forum. September 3rd was significant. That's what prompted the potential for identifying an effective commencement date, presumably sometime after September 3rd, that would enable a determination of, as to whether an election would be called. And of course, the calling of an election would presume the filing of a petition and the verification of the petition, followed by the calling of an election. So presumably, that first date would be sometime after September 3rd in anticipation that if there was an election called on or before September 3rd, then you would want the effective date deferred until presumably sometime after that general election. So it, it's a, obviously, a more involved approach, but is a means of accelerating the effective date without having to predetermine or speculate as to whether there'll be a petition filed or not, but still leave open the opportunity to not have an effective date that would get you in that we're in effect, we're potentially out of effect as a result of the election. So those, as we, again, speculated on what your objectives might be, thought were the scenarios that you might wish to consider after taking into consideration all of the relevant dates. Now, I've tried not to get too bogged down into dates and the time spans between those dates and that sort of thing. We can talk about any of that to the extent you wish. Hopefully, that's helpful, and if you have any questions, be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions to counsel on those different options or anything that he presented there?
Well, I might ask a question. What you're saying on option three is the, the ordinance would be effective immediately on option three, but we would defer implementation until after, say, September 15th?
Yes, Commissioner.
Then it wouldn't be in the ballot box.
One thing I might, one question I might, one point I might make that I should have emphasized, each of those scenarios anticipate an immediately effective ordinance. We expected that that was, that was your wish, and it was to draw the distinction between... None of these scenarios anticipate that the ordinance is kind of in limbo. The ordinance would be, if approved on second reading, would go into, quote, "effect". It would be published. It's just that, within the ordinance, it would provide for these deferred effective dates, depending on what, you know, if that's your wish. And I want to, if I may, Commissioner, could you make sure I understand the, the other part of your question?
Well, I just meant that it wouldn't be on the ballot if it weren't effect, if it weren't implemented until September 15th. Wouldn't be on that, on the November ballot.
Right, so in, in, in option three...
Is that what I'm understanding you to say?
In option three, then the first one would read, um, that basically, it comes into effect sometime immediately following September 3rd, because by September 3rd, the commission will have either called the election, the, the commission will have acted on September 3rd. So that first one could be September 4th or any subsequent date.
Yeah.
And the latter one would be, then if it goes to general election, it would be sometime after November the 6th, November 7th forward.
That's correct.
Okay.
The, the first date presumably...
Mr. Mayor?
No, I was right there with you.
I, I'm always with Greg most of the time, but it's like...
As opposed to option one, if it was immediately affected, the implementation would be immediate as well.
Well, as soon as it can be published, correct?
That's correct. Publication would be the key there.
And publication, again, I think we asked, is that like, how, how's that be... And publication, again, I think we asked, is that like, how's that vehicle, how's that vehicle work, and how long does it generally take?
The Salina Journal generally publishes ordinances anytime you have second reading on a particular Monday. They will generally publish, and I should look to Shanny to be sure I'm current on my information, am I correct, that it's generally Thursday or Friday of that week?
So the same, basically the same week?
Yes, usually the end of the week following a Monday that you would approve it on second reading.
Okay. Other, other questions or clarifications? We, we had a lot of public comment on this last week. We've received a lot of written comments, but we still have citizens in front of us. If there's something new for the commission that we haven't heard, that hasn't been presented, feel free to.
Janice Norland, six oh eight East Republic, Salina. Many of you know that Lincoln, Nebraska passed a similar ordinance last Monday, probably about the same time that Salina was passing theirs. It included gender identity and sexual orientation. And if you look on the information through the Lincoln newspaper and also the website for the city, Lincoln chose to give the foes, as they call it, fifteen days to either submit the petitions or it would be implemented. And I would ask the commission to do something similar. I think that the idea that somehow we have to give the foes all of this information and education and all the things that are necessary to help them get this petition, as Mr. Bengston said last Monday, the petition is completely separate from this ordinance. I don't see that there's a lot of cost for implementation on this issue, and I believe that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bengston, but if the city commission chose to do something like that, that would not preclude the opposition to still go ahead with their petition.
You're correct. They are, they are two very separate processes and could occur at any time.
Correct.
And as, a point I probably should have made more so as well, obviously the commission is not in the position of directing the petitioners as to when and what they do. It was just more a matter of whether you wanted to present an opportunity, frankly, to have, if the potential for an election existed, to do so without cost, without public, additional public cost.
And all of that, for any citizens, is outlined in the Kansas statutes and is a legal process that we should not upend? Is that correct? I mean, this is, the whole process that you've outlined is, is based upon certain allowable dates, certain allowable action times?
Yes, these are all statutory dates. The only interjection, I suppose you could say, of, of my own opinion relative to that, this scenario, was that, you might recall, I mentioned that the statute refers to your, if a valid petition is filed and you don't adopt or approve the question, then you must call a special election unless a city election occurs within ninety days. My opinion is that it would be generally deemed reasonable if there was a general election within that same timeframe and being able to utilize that mechanism. That's the only interjection of any private opinion.
And I think my comments and Mr. Bengston's agreement with me that, that this does not, anything that the city does today does not preclude the opposition from going forward with their petition. They can look at these dates and they can figure these days out just as well as anyone else, and there's nothing that you could do today as far as saying, "We're going to implement this within thirty days or fifteen or whatever," to either, they either get their petitions ready or they have the next, whatever, until that next date if they want to hit the general election or not. That is up to them to decide, not for the city to help or to direct. I have a couple of questions. I think September third is Labor Day. You mentioned that there was a city commission meeting on September third. I doubt that there will be. I don't know if that makes a difference in your scenario of calendar, the calendar that you've presented. The other question I have is, and I think you've answered it, a general election in your view is considered a city election then, even though there are no city offices up?
No, that's a good point, to clarify that. I wasn't just assuming that we could equate the elections. The, the key, in my opinion, on the statute was that it was, it was saying you either have to call a special election, or if that city election is coming up within a ninety-day period, you can look to that election. What I was willing to suggest was that if you were faced with a petition, you had that, I was thinking more of in terms of the ninety-day period. Is it, is it sufficiently equivalent to suggest that if a, if a city election within ninety days is a reasonable period of time for the calling of a special election when a city election is out there, it would seem like a general election out there within ninety days would be a reasonable period of time, particularly now with the advanced time necessary to even conduct a special election, because the special election would have the same mailing requirements of the, of the mail ballots as would--
My only question was, I thought I heard you say that this petition had to be held at a city election, and my question is, is the general election considered a city election?
I would say it's not. It, it's not that it has to be held at a, quote, "city election."
Okay.
It's, it's if there is a city election ninety days out, you don't have to call a separate election, you can utilize that, that city election.
I misunderstood. I thought, I thought that the statute read that it had to be a city election, and that's why I asked the question.
No, it, it says you have to call an election. But if there's one out there within, a city election within ninety days, you can utilize that election. The only assumption I was making, or the only correlation I was making between the two was the ninety-day test.
And the only question I have is, is a general election considered a city election if there are no city--
Oh.
--officers up--
I'm sorry.
--for election?
It, it can be, it is a lawful mechanism for a city question.
Okay.
And we have utilized either the primary or the general on previous occasions for, usually, there would never be city commission positions. Those are on the spring city election schedule, but it is available for referenda-type questions.
So to summarize my, my position, and I think probably I can speak for the Kansas Equality Coalition and the supporters of this ordinance, you, you passed it last Monday. We would implore you to go ahead and implement it as soon as possible, knowing that this does not preclude the opposition from coming in and trying to do whatever they need to do next. The final thing I was going to say was, I think that to have a valid question for Mike Montoya to even review, again, Mr. Bengston, I defer to you, but I believe the question's going to have to say, shall the, the chapter thirteen of the Salina City Ordinance be repealed?
Well, it would actually, I would expect it would be this particular ordinance that would be repealed, not, not chapter thirteen generally.
Yes, but I mean, it's going to have to say something like that, and so I assume that before they can even draft the question and start the petitions, they're going to have to have something to repeal.
Right.
Again, making it so that it makes, it's necessary to make this effective as soon as possible.
Well, and that's, just to clarify, that, that's the key to the distinction that I was making between the effective date of this ordinance and the date of commencement of the implementations.
That's all I had, thank you.
Name's Hugh, name's Hugh Urban, eleven twenty-seven East Ellsworth Avenue, Salina. I wasn't going to speak, but I do have a question. What happens between the immediate effective date and the implementation date? What's, how can it be effective if it hadn't been implemented?
Well, that's, that's an important distinction that I, that I was trying to make, and it's, it's a matter of whether that, for an ordinance to be effective, it must be read twice and published. But whether it be state law, and you'll occasionally see this in state law, where there will be a statute that the amendment is effective, but there is a deferred implementation date in the text, that's what prompts those proposed, as you see there, even the structure of the ordinance would be such that in each case there would be that, that last section that would make it clear that this ordinance is in effect. But in the last two options, you do have a deferral of the implementation date.
So in the real world, in a practical sense, it's not effective until it's been implemented? No one could use it as a recourse for--
Correct.
For discrimination?
That's correct. That's correct. No one, you're absolutely right.
Thank you.
I just want, oh, I'm sorry. I just want some clarification. The process on the, I'm sorry, K-TAR, twenty-three oh seven Northwood Lane. The implementation has to be done before the petition process can even start. Am I correct in that?
No, no, you're not.
Okay, because somebody told me that--
It needs to be second reading and effective, but not implemented.
Not, so the implementation process doesn't have to occur?
There are two separate processes. A ordinance becomes on the books and in effect upon the publishing after the second reading. Okay? The implementation of it is a timed mechanism. It can be implemented upon the publication, and it can be deferred for a timeframe. And that's common city ordinances, Topeka laws, especially with ones where there's reasonable considerations either by government or business in order to do the things required in order to follow the law and not inadvertently break the new ordinance or law. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Gary Schwartz, over five twenty-eight South College. What possible downside is there to, upon second reading, publish, make it effective and implement? It's my understanding that it's not going to be costly to any of the potential vendors, et cetera. And, and just let me finish. Then the petitioners-to-be have a hundred and eighty days. So is there any downside whatsoever in second reading?
Yes, I believe what you said is, is hearsay, because it's your impression that it doesn't have any cost for implementation, and it's been communicated to some of us that it has a lot of cost for implementation. A corporation just making sure that a lawyer reviews, and it's an eight-person corporation, and they don't retain attorneys, and they have a cost. So there are, so it's not that there is no cost for implementing this. And that's where the grace has been asked, that, okay, if you pass that ordinance, will you allow us time to go through the things that we need to implement it? And then, as you remember, because you were here present during the Clean Air Ordinance a lot, the consideration was made in anticipation of the vote to stave off all of the required things to implement it, just to see what happened with the vote. And I think that was just a consideration that the commission made and viewed in favor of then.
So if it would be implemented by a week from now, not only in effect but implemented, precisely what would be the cost if I'm a vendor? Why, if I would say, "No, I'm not going to sell anything to them anymore because I don't want anything all darn LGBT stuff going on," what would I have to do to still sell you my product that would cost me money?
Well, it's not necessarily the vendors, although that's a consideration--
Well, vendor or the county or--
And we heard in the meeting last week that there are four hundred vendors, but they can contact them and get the paperwork done and get it phased in. But it, it, this was the major issue down in Hutch, and it was the public accommodations. When you take the public accommodations into account and the legal things that so many people need to do, whether they're businesses that are, are going to change their operations manuals, change their church policy manuals, whatever it is, those are more the consideration in the, in the, in all of the private sector, public accommodations, implementation.
So, so if I'm a church, I'm going to have to make a change in my policy? I somehow doubt that that's going to happen and/or that--
It's on our frequently asked questions. It's been stated--
That it has to happen.
--that it is, and they need to retain counsel to verify ergo costs and schedule time. Okay, so that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I needed to know, because if, if that is the case, then it's a matter of legal issue that anybody in this community is going to have to overhaul their whole mode of operating in case someone wants to have a celebration at such and such a church. They have to be prepared just in case, although no one's really going to want a celebration at that church, probably.
In your opinion?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so that's, that's, that's the way it is. And of course, what, what you're considering then is the hundred and eighty-day routine.
Well, I think Mr. Bengston presented three different options. One is effective immediately, implemented immediately. Two is effective immediately, but choose some arbitrary date that gives a timeframe. And the third is in anticipation of a, a potential petition and it moving forward along those lines. So those are the three options.
Okay, that, that answered my question. Thank you.
My name is Janet Hanson from Salina, Kansas, one five five eight Austin Circle, and I actually just have one question. What is the scenario if the opposition cannot get their verifiable signatures? What happens then to the ordinance? And that's really my only question.
Yeah, super. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, in the event that the commission would decide option three, then the first, the first part of that paragraph reads that it would become in effect on that date after that meeting. And so that's that first date. And the other two are triggered only if there's a petition and a call for the election is the necessity of that second November date. So the first one would be in anticipation somewhat in September. The latter one would be if it goes, if they actually come through and we have a consideration before the commission for that petition.
The short answer is it dies.
Yes.
Right. Actually, if they don't get the signatures, that, their, their petition dies and it just--
And it gets implemented.
Well, it could be implemented before their signatures. That's going to be decided, but, I mean, Greg, that's just a quick analogy, is that you don't get signatures, there's no argument to the, to the ordinance, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mayor, I think we need to get on with the city's business. We've spent, I mean, over ninety days on this issue. We have a budget to prepare, CIP, there's lots of things going on to maintain our streets and our, and our other business with the city. So, you know, I think with the cutting of taxes and all that's, we keep hearing about, I think that we need to get to budgeting and to get this issue, get on with the issue.
Before any motion, I, I would need to ask a question of counsel. In order to put the effective and implementation mechanism into the second reading consideration for the ordinance, I'm assuming that we would need a motion and a second and a vote on the implementation strategy, if you call it that, and then the second reading on the ordinance with that contained. Is that correct?
I appreciate you asking that. My suggestion, Mayor, would be that the, the ordinance, as you considered it on first reading and as it is before you for second reading, contains the language, the, the option one language is identical to the language that is in the current version of the ordinance that is before you. I would suggest that if there is a motion to approve the ordinance on second reading, that that motion be made and seconded, and that we are again in that scenario where if there is an alternative approach that would like, that any commissioner would like to put forward, that that would be in the form of a motion to amend the primary motion. And that would then give you the opportunity to explore among commissioners whether there is a majority that wishes to take one of the alternative approaches.
Before voting on that motion, you're saying?
Well, yes, before--
Vote the motion through first?
You want to, you want the motion, you want the main motion on the floor and presumably seconded. That then sets the stage for any further discussion and any further motions to amend that-- that, that would, that would tell you where the majority wanted to go in terms of the implementation.
Okay. I guess one just quick thing for the record, too. We keep hearing every day in the paper about this, that we're allowing this bathroom ordinance. And since we have such a wonderful sitting city manager today, gee, he's doing such a great job today, I didn't want him to get off without saying any words, just for the at-home players, if you could, is it currently illegal before this ordinance for a man to use a woman's restroom or vice versa, if they go in for the sole purpose of using the restroom?
If we had a complaint relative to that, it would depend upon the situation, but typically it could be disturbing the peace or disorderly conduct type situation. Yes.
If they were strictly using the restroom, would you consider that a disorderly conduct?
If the person that was in there was offended by whatever actions that, that that person observed, we would certainly take enforcement action based upon that person's description and we'd let the court decide.
On there. Okay.
Mr. Bingson, if, if I applied for a job at a business today and I was rejected because I revealed to them that I was bisexual, do I have a legal course to sue them?
I don't believe so.
I can't, I can't take it just to any lawyer in town or anything and just sue them.
On strictly the basis you described, I would not understand that to believe, to be a basis for a discrimination claim. No.
And that's the same with the housing?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to, there are those that, that have said that, well, there's the right of anybody to sue anybody at any given time in our country. And so these things already exist. And I think that's what Commissioner Householder was pointing out. If a, if a person dressed as a lady that's clearly a man walks into a women's restroom and does something offensive or that scares them, they have legal recourse for that. But on somebody turning you away for employment or housing, there is no legal recourse.
Correct. And I think we do want to make sure that we distinguish the, the effect, of course, locally of the ordinance is to put that person in a position to take action in relation to our administrative processes under our ordinances within the Human Relations Department, not necessarily creating a cause of action separate and apart.
So then if I applied and the ordinance was passed with an employer here in town and they rejected me and stated it because I was bisexual, I still can't sue them? I file a claim here at the city at the Human Relations Department?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thereby starting the process where you could sue them.
Well, it's, it is, it is, it is an administrative process that can result in an adjudication of whether there's been unlawful conduct and the potential award of compensatory damages. I don't mean to belittle or to minimize it. I just wanted to make that distinction between filing suit in district court, say, as opposed to the administrative process that's available under the ordinance.
For those at home, I just wanted to hear, have them hear that from you, that it, it still doesn't set it up at an attorney's office. It sets up a process whereby it might get there, but the administrators are the city Human Relations Department.
Right. And ultimately adjudicated in a hearing before the municipal judge if, if it goes that, if conciliation is unsuccessful.
Hopefully it never happened.
And I would say that unfortunately you can sue anybody for anything. I think the difference is whether there's any merit to the claim or not.
Whether you'd be successful. Right.
Against us, no whole other class that we won't ever be protecting, and that's the frivolous lawsuit filing lawyers.
And Human Relations Departments are very, very careful about making sure that those complaints have merit.
Good.
Very good. Any more discussion? Any more questions? I would entertain a motion for consideration.
I move we approve ordinance on second reading, ordinance number 12-10639, amending Chapter 13 of the Salina Code pertaining to equal opportunity affirmative action.
Second.
And then now it'd be appropriate time to modify to say that I would go with?
No. She, she, she motioned it the way it's written, which is with option one.
Yeah, there's a motion and a second, and, but this would be the time for subsidiary motions to amend if that would be any commissioner's wish.
Then I would move, motion to amend that we, I don't know, maybe we can get in discussions. This appropriate time probably for discussion, too, what seems to work.
Certainly.
We discussed that a few weeks may give you enough time. I don't want to pressure you. It was at Mayor Jennings urging that if we did this, that he would want it immediately So I think we kind of discussed with you maybe the amount of time you would need to contact our vendors and, I mean, is maybe two weeks give you enough time or do you need 30 days or?
Come on up to the microphone so that everybody can...
Everybody at home knows who we're talking to.
I'm uncomfortable answering your question because I'm not sure how we're going to notify vendors. We, we will send notices out to everybody and we can do that in two days. That's not, in fact, we have the mail merge ready to go. In terms of, there was some confusion around contracts and what our obliga, or what our authority is to change contracts as they're in the middle. So I, I'm uncomfortable answering that question, but in terms of timeframes that we need to get things ready to go, it's ready. We're, we're, we're ready today.
So have we said a couple of weeks?
If I may, Commissioner, and we certainly have a myriad of, of obligations, if you will, contractual arrangements, and we would understand it to be our staff's charge to make that transition as each situation allows, if that makes sense. Certain, certain contracts are going to either come up for renewal at certain times or their provisions may, depending on what the provisions say, we would understand it to be staff's obligation to make the transition at the earliest opportunity.
I think we discussed that in the last meeting, and I just raised my concern with that because the de facto statement in that is any public accommodation or, or whatever has to be implemented at a different date than a contract that we're waiting for three months to then expire so we can update it. So that, that was my concern. If it's, if it's there and it's not just perceived and it's a direct need, then we should not phase in, implement things and say, okay, it's, it's okay to go forward.
Mr. Mayor, if I can clarify, the obligations of the contractors around public accommodations would be the same as any other contractor. The difference between a contractor with the city and if the implementation date is next week, say that you, you go with option one, all of the entities in the city of Salina would be compelled to comply with the law at that point with regard to public accommodations and employment, unless they have fewer than four employees.
Sure.
The obligation, the additional obligation that they would have as contractors would be to add information into their agreements and into their policies that say that they won't discriminate. A business that doesn't contract with us cannot discriminate against somebody in employment. A business that contracts with us would have to put that language into their policies. So that's the only difference. From a, from the perspective of an individual, they would see no difference in the way that they're treated when they, when they go into those businesses.
I understand that. The business units do. And that, that's my concern, is that a business unit within the city of Salina then is treated different than a contract. So if you were doing business with the city of Salina, that would be one time where it would be beneficial, because you could stave off having to do your paperwork and, and legal work till later date.
So if I just, do I just need to make a movement to amend the motion to a couple of weeks, 15 days?
If that's your wish, Commissioner, then that would be the way to approach that, yes.
Sure. And that would require a second on there?
Yes, it would.
I think if that's your, if that's a motion you want to make...
Yeah, that's, that's, I'm sorry, that's my amendment to, to Commissioner Crawford's.
Okay. So you're going with option two? So we would just need to state a date that then would be the publicized date and proceed from there?
Yeah. What do we have in a couple of weeks or, or Monday? I don't have a calendar, really.
I think that third page.
Yeah.
It doesn't start quite soon enough.
Yeah, it didn't start quite soon enough.
Not for Commissioner Householder.
We were trying to keep it as visible as possible.
So sometime in June here and there. Wherever that may be. Say, yeah, June 4th or so. That works.
June 4?
Yeah. I put June 4th in that time slot.
Motion dies for lack of a second?
Second.
We'll have to reenter the motion.
Okay. I'll reenter the amendment to the motion as for June 4th of 2012 for implementation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass on second reading, ordinance number 12...
I'm sorry, Mayor, I...
Amendment to, to the ordinance.
Yes, the motion, the, the first vote would simply be on the motion to amend.
Yep. Our prior mayor was catching me on the same thing right away. We have a motion and a second to amend ordinance number 12-10639 to include an implementation, a deferred implementation date of June 4th, 2012. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Aye. Motion carries three to two with Commissioner Angel and Mayor Jennings dissenting.
That brings you back to the main motion and is still subject to discussion if there's further discussion. I should say the main motion as amended.
If there's no further discussion, we have the motion and the second to approve on second reading, 12-10639. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel?
Nay.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Jennings?
Nay. Motion carries three, two.
Motion to adjourn? Second.
Motion to adjourn, those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We now conclude our meeting.